The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, 23 present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson Jr. from Maple Temple. Can we all stand for prayer? Gracious God, heaven and Father, there's no greater freedom than to experience freedom from sin and debt that was provided for us through Jesus Christ. Today our hearts and souls are free to offer praise to you, but this we're thankful, as Independence Day approach, we're reminded of all those who have sacrificed for our freedom, filed an example of your Son. Let's not take our freedom for granted, both physically and spiritually. May we remember that a very high price was paid for our freedom. Our freedom cost others their lives. On today, we ask that you would bless those who served and continue to give their lives for our freedom. Bless them with favor and grace. Meet the needs and watch over their families. Help all of us to live in a way that is reflective of your glory. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our families, and our community. Let's give Reverend Watson a round of applause for a great prayer. We will suspend with our regular order of business to take up our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for approval of our consented
Courtesy Resolutions.
Courtesy Resolutions today.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, second about Alderwoman from the 12th.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we're going to recognize a constituent of mine and a woman that's dear to us here at the Board of Aldermen. Ms. Donna Evans Booker here in front of us is going to be doing her namchos tomorrow. She is getting married. And I know there's someone else getting married here soon too, so we might be doing this again. Donna, I don't know if you want to come up and join me along with your husband-to-be, Mr. Elliott, and family. And I would say, to do a resolution recognizing your marriage and something that we can research from 100 years from now, that means it's got to stay together. Because we got proof of this combination. So I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas we are delighted to pause in our deliberations to recognize Reverend Dr. Donna Evans Booker and James Wayman Elliott on the occasion of their marriage to be celebrated on July 1st, 2017. Donna is the Assistant Clerk to the St. Louis Board of Aldermen for 28 years, and she has a MBA from Lindenwood University and her, is it a PhD? THD from, oh, okay, never seen that. Colan Bible Institute and is Founder and Senior Pastor of Trinity Mount Carmel Church in Jefferson County. Whereas Donna is the proud mother of two daughters, Angela and Alisa, one son, Aaron, and one son-in-law, George, and two wonderful grandchildren, Amaya and Kaya. Is that right?
Yes.
And as many other family members. Whereas James is from Columbus, Ohio, and grew up in the construction industry. James has three daughters, Darian Nicole, Alana Crystal, Brooke, and a stepson TJ that he has raised, and he's a proud grandfather and great-grandfather, and has many other family members. James has a bachelor degree from Concordia University and many awards and certificates for social service work in the community. James has worked two years as a community organizer with Acorn and over 18 years of employment services with Missouri and Nevada Goodwill Organizations. And in 2011, he was awarded the Goodwill Hero Award for the Mears Goodwill. And whereas both Donna and James are, have many years in the community service, and they continue to make love. That keeps, I'm thinking of saying, to keep the love, that glues, that holds the family and family members, and their devotion to God is necessary ingredient for a lifetime of togetherness and fulfillment. It reminds me of last week. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen in the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Reverend Dr. Donna Evans Booker and James Wayman Elliott on their wedding celebration.
Wow.
Sorry, I didn't get to read it before it was. So Donna, I know, I've been knowing you for some time, and I know, you know, a lot of your family and history and so forth. So to take a step into the wedding bliss is something very serious. But being married now for almost five years, it is a special commitment. And you all look like you're in love. I got the text message when you got engaged. Nice jewelry, sir, I would say. So we just want to congratulate you and welcome your family here to the Board of Aldermen to see what Donna does. And I will not be able to be there tomorrow, but I do have a very nice wedding gift. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Well, I would like to make a motion. We do that in bank.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 23rd, second about Alderwoman from the 19th that we make the resolution in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. At this point, I would normally say, Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I just thought I would stand and just say a few nice words to you. I think I'm one of the first ones that saw you all out in public together. And I'm going to tell you something. James, you're very attentive. Make sure you understand that must continue forever. Okay? Make her smile, make her laugh, and keep her dancing. Okay? So at the end of the day, when she comes here with us, she'll be a much better person too. So I'm very excited for you. There's nothing more than forming a union that can be loving. And the love comes with all those who are connected, and you bring a special thing to the world itself. I know that you all are going to work well together in supporting her dream and her journey with being a pastor, and I wish you well.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Donna, congratulations. And sir, you don't have to worry about her reading, communicating, because she'll probably be trying to read you a bedtime Bible story. But God bless you, and God keep you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. Is this resolution in bank? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, it was made in bank.
I'm late, huh?
Yeah, that's okay.
At least I made it here on time.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to know if this resolution is in bank, because if it is.
That's good.
I just thought I'd take some of that spotlight off of the Alderman. We've served together long enough, that he's usually very attentive. Want to say to Donna and to her intended and her family, you're merging two families together. That's wonderful. It's a lot of hard work being married. I know that you're up to it. You've been here at the Board of Aldermen since before me, you and a few other people. So I know that you are into a long-term commitment, because if you committed to here that long, it'll be easy going home to someone that's loving and caring and wants to make you happy. And make sure you do the same thing for him. Been with my spouse 42 years, been married 29, almost 30. So I know the work that it takes, but it really is worth the effort when you have somebody that is your soulmate and that makes you happy and you make happy. And congratulations on your upcoming nuptials tomorrow. All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also just want to say congratulations to both of you on tomorrow's wedding. You know, having been married since early 90s, I'm not going to say, a long time. You know, that partnership means a lot. And it's, it's, it's at the core of the family. And a lot of the challenges that we have across our city today has to do with the structure of the family and what's happening within the households. So I want to thank you for, not just your commitment here, Donna, and what you've done through your time here at the Board of Aldermen serving as clerk, and then prior to that time, but what you've done to go become a doctor, you know, what you've done to become a pastor that shows some commitment and to a goal. And this bond that you've now forming will strengthen not just your immediate family, but the broader family also. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your journey here. And have a great time when you're in St. Louis, and it's going to be magnificent to see this bond happen tomorrow. And we will all continue to pray for you and have well wishes for you, and just for the family, because I know you understand what the resolution is, but this is for the family. The resolution that we're presenting today is the highest honor this Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of that organizations or individuals' commitment to the city up until that point in time or a special occasion. And it becomes part of the permanent records of the city. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis, you will find that we paused in our deliberations today to recognize this union, because it was important. So let's give them a big round of applause and congratulations on this.
Okay. Donna, you've been light on your feet down here. You got a pep in your step. You've been happy. We didn't know until the, well, I didn't know until the engagement where it was all coming from, but I see this is your time. And it's to be a bride and shine, and I hope you enjoy yourself tomorrow. Did you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you, President Reed, Deion, Aldermen and Alderwoman. I really, really appreciate all the kind words you've said to me and James, and I thank you for your support. And I thank my family, both families, for supporting us. And we ask you to just continue to pray for us and pray for the City of St. Louis. God bless you.
They take the big camera off.
Oh, they do?
Before we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, Madam Clerk, Resolution 81, sponsored by the Alderman from the 18th, belongs on the regular Resolutions Calendar. So make note of that change. Move Resolution 81 from Courtesy Resolutions to First Read and Resolution Calendar.
So noted.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, second about Alderman from the 12th that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. We have one more Courtesy Resolution, Resolution Number 75. Alderwoman from the 20th, like to approach Dyas,
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Resolution Number 75 is honoring the life of Ms. Deborah Craig. For those of you who don't know Ms. Deborah Craig, she was the Director of Marquette Rec Center for many, many years. She was with the St. Louis Rec Department since 1993 until her passing earlier this month. And Ms. Deborah Craig was with, like I said, Marquette Rec, but she also served a significant amount of time at Booter, at Tandy recreational centers. And her hard work, dedication, and commitment to the youth of our city was unsurpassed in the Recreation Division. I'm honored to have behind me many members of her family and her life that I'd like to take a moment to introduce. Her daughter, Ms. Angela Eichelberger, and her husband, Casey Eichelberger, her good friend, Stephanie Dale Shaw, and her husband, Brian Shaw, Ms. Antoine East Campbell, who just joined us. We also have Evelyn Rice Peebles, who's the Director of our Recreation Department, and her staff members, Dana, Angie, and I believe I saw Mr. Greg. And with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over really quickly to Ms. Evelyn Rice Peebles to say a few words. Okay?
Thank you, Alderwoman, esteemed Board of Aldermen and Women. We appreciate this resolution. Deborah Craig, and she was never just Deborah, she was always Deborah Craig, is a wonderful woman. Her energy is still with us. She gave 110% to the children. She loved children that other people didn't make time for. She loved the unlovely. And she is just wonderful, and I won't take a lot of time, but if we were all a little bit more able to give of ourselves without any thought of or expectation of anything in return, Deborah Craig, even if you were 22 years old and weighed 300 pounds, you were one of Deborah's babies. And she loved them all, and we appreciate your recognition of her.
Deborah, Ms. Deborah Craig made such an impression on our community that one of our community members, Ms. Wendy Campbell, and her son, Naim Campbell, would like to say a few words in recognition of just of the work that Ms. Deborah Craig did and the impact it had on their lives. Wendy?
Hello, everyone. I'm Wendy Campbell. This is my son, Naim Campbell. We met Ms. Craig about seven years ago when we moved over in Dutch Town. And right off, this woman was a wealth of information. She gave me some information that changed my life, because my son was two, and I needed a daycare so I could get out and do some things. And she was like, why don't you take him up the street to Youth and Need? And I did. And I was able to find part-time work and give a lot of time to her. I volunteered in the community a lot, and it was great. Ms. Craig, she was so funny, and she was sweet and sour. You would talk to her, and she would give you a lot of information, and she was blunt. And if you kind of checked her off, she would check you. And then at the end, it's all sweet again. And I'm like, okay, did she just go off on me? Okay, we're going to continue this. I like, I like her. She's informative and kind, and I can learn a lot about her. And she was wonderful. Everyone loved her. Every community center she was at, she was loved. And she not, not only did she know about the community center, she knew what was going on in the community. So she was just a wealth of information. She will be missed, and I really wanted my son to speak on his behalf as far as his relationship with her. You want to speak, sweetie?
I've known Ms. Craig for a long time, and she, I remember when I was like four or five, and she gave me a fishing pole. And she had a very nice personality. She was nice, she was mean, but when I was, when I would run and do the wrong thing, she would check me. But she was a very nice person, and she checked me. She did a lot of good things.
Thank you.
I just want to close out by reminding every of you the work that our recreation centers do for our youth. Ms. Angela Eichelberger, Ms. Craig's daughter, would like to say a few words.
Okay. What I want to say mostly about my mom, she was that mean one and that good-hearted person. And she was also a family person. And the thing I want to say most of my mom, she loved to love, even though it be a mad thing, but she would still love you at heart that it would cut you deep. And at this time of, the slow time came along, she gave me and my sister a new name. She called us Thing One and Thing Two. So she would tell us, she'd say, listen to you. She told my sister to be a bigger sister to me than she ever would be, and she's always been that way. But even though I ignore her, because I'm the little one. But that's part of Ms. Craig in her and Ms. Craig in me, because I think I was kind of like the mean one, and she's like the nice one. But that don't get along too good. But anyway, my mom told us at the time of her passing for our family to stick together and come back to each other. So if you away from your family, it don't matter where you at. Reach out and touch them, hug them. It don't matter if they overseas, send them a letter, a text, you know, anything. I don't care if you met them for $2 or 2 cents. Life is what it is, and it's very short. And that's all I have to say. Just keep it, keep it together.
Okay, I just wanted to piggyback off what my little sister said. My mom was very outgoing, and she did a lot of things, met a lot of people, and she did believe in family. She did go outside a lot. She did a lot of things. I never showed up. Y'all know I never showed up. I don't like going outside. But again, like I said, she never once cried about her illness when she got sick. The only time she cried is when people came to the hospital or came to see her at home in her final days. And as my sister said, if you could reach out to your family members at any time and embrace them before it's too late, I would definitely recommend that you do that, because like I said, my mom didn't cry about her illness. She cried because the people who loved her and cared for her, excuse me, cared for her, came and visited and just whatever it was, just hugged each other and embraced each other. And that's what my mom cried for, because she always believed in friends and family. Thank you so much.
As our city moves forward, trying to figure out just how to address crime in our city, we can all recognize the importance that our rec centers play in the lives of our children and the communities we serve. It's a servant like Ms. Deborah Craig, who's dedicated her whole life, up until her last final days, serving our city's children and protecting them when they're in our recreation centers. So we thank the service of Ms. Craig. We honor her today with Resolution Number 73. Mr. President, do you want to say a word?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
I just want to echo what the Alderwoman from the 20th said. The service to recreation is so important. One of the problems I think that we've had with this city is that we've pulled back, not at the recreation centers, but there was a time when each park had somebody there, and you made the requisite keychain that you braided or you made the pot holder. And it's so funny, because I grew up in Illinois, and my husband and I talk about the same thing, because we were doing the same thing in two very different states, but it was working out very well. And that was, we kept our children busy. We gave them a place to be that was positive instead of them sitting on the porch or finding something negative to do. We played all day at the parks or at the recreation center. It makes a difference in the children, not only, I don't know if they still do the presidential thing, but they had the Presidential Challenge when you were in grade school and which you tried to get the Presidential patch. I still have mine back from the day. And so the things that you do when you're over at recreation serving our children is so important. And I want to thank all of you. And the young man who made the speech, I want to say, sweetie, you did such a good job, and I appreciate you. And I want to just echo what the Alderwoman from the 20th said of how important recreation is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also want to just thank Alderman from the 4th. Also want to, just for the folks who aren't here or have not had an opportunity to thank Deborah Craig and her family, on behalf of the City of St. Louis, I want to offer thanks from the entire city for a job well done and life well lived. You know, when I hear, when I heard the story that the young man told, was telling about how she would check him, right? That's important. That's important. I want to make sure that that's not lost on anyone here. You know, agapi love is the highest form of love that there is to give. And it's without, it's unconditional love, and it's not looking for anything in return. When I was growing up, guess what? My mama would check me, because my mama loved me, because that's what love is. So Ms. Craig checked him, and she checked others because she had agapi love, and she had love for them, and she wanted them to do better. So when, by doing that, she instilled those qualities in him and moved him on to do greater things. And she has touched not just him, but hundreds and thousands of people that are now going to go across the United States of America and do great things, because she had unconditional love for them. She was born with that, and she's instilled it in both you, all of her kids. So I want to, on behalf of the City of St. Louis and my family and friends, I want to thank not just the family and Ms. Craig, but all of them in conjunction for a life well lived and well served. Let's give them one big round of applause, and let's stand and give them a big Let's give them one big round of applause, and let's stand and give them a big round of applause from the City of St. Louis. And a thank you.
Can we do a picture? Can we do a photo? And then who's going to sign us?
While they're lining up for the photo on this side, I'm going to just put this resolution in context. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. So what this does today is it cements in time Mrs. Craig some of her many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the city and you want to learn about the Renaissance and rebirth of our city, and the change agents listed amongst those will be Ms. Deborah Craig and her contributions to the city. Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For my special and honored guest, I'd like to have Mr. Anthony Shahid, Mr. Jahah Mukmin, and Ms. Latifa Shahid, and also our Sheriff Vernon Betts, who is also a resident of 21st Ward.
Alderman from the 14th.
Mr. President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have as my honored guest President Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73 and Clinton McBride from Labor's International
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to welcome as my special guest today Mavis Thompson of the License Collector's Office and her staff, Vernon Betts and all the sheriffs in the room, and all those of you who have, will not be introduced. You are my special guests.
Alderman from the 22nd.
And thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Lee Ray Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you. I'd like to have as my honored guest Mr. Jared Boyd, who is with the Treasurer's Office. And I'm bad with titles. I know he's a counselor, and I think he's the Chief of Staff. And also Mr. Vernon Betts, the Sheriff of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Lou Hamilton.
Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd also like to have Jared Boyd from the Treasurer's Office as my special guest, as well as Leonard Johnson, also from the Treasurer's Office.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Wally Amusa, who is a resident of 26th Ward and the sheriff, and especially Steve Chalmers of the Sheriff Department. Thank you.
Alderman from 13th.
Yes, President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans from the Carpenter's Regional Council. He's a friend and neighbor. Thank you.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have a number of guests today. I'd like to have as my honored guest my good friend Megan Shackelford from the Kelly Group, Deputy Stebo, who I think was up there in the gallery, Brian Williams from Congressman Clay's office, and last but certainly not least, two of our summer associates at my law firm, Spencer Fain, Tommy Akinyeme, and Claire Nelson, who are law students at Washington University. Thank you.
Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as an honored guest today Anthony Lancia with the AGC.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. How's everybody doing today? That's great. Good morning, residents of the 3rd Ward. I would like to have as my honored guest today Latifa Shahid, Brother Shahid, Mr. Jahah Mohammed, that is a resident of the 3rd Ward, and also Lou Hamilton. And the laborers in Carpenter Union back there, we got Errol Sprotner, AGC, the labor union, I'm sorry.
Clint McBride.
All right, thank you.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Daryl Jones, a Director of Community Relations at the Urban League. Also, one of our interns at the Urban League, Robert Loomis. He's a senior at MICDS. Mark Schessel, he's with Government Relations with St. Louis University. Also, Anthony Shahid, Latifa Shahid, our honorable sheriff, who is extremely respected by our community, for those who don't know and understand. Also, Brian Williams from Congressman Clay's office. And most especially, to say to those who have not had anybody say a kind word to them in the last few days, I know a lot of senior citizens watch this show. Have a blessed holiday. Thank you.
Absolutely. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to introduce my special guest today, JP Farmley with the Mayor's Office. He'll be my guest today. And everybody else that's in this room, I want to introduce him as my special guest. And on behalf of the Farmer Alderman from the 11th Ward, he wanted me to introduce the weed group as his Farmer Special Guest.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on June 30th. This is Lena Harn's birthday for you folks that like the song "Stormy Weather." On this day in 1938, Superman first appeared. But what's most important is that this is National Handshake Day. So everyone take the time, reach out to the person next to you, and shake their hand. And as you do this, remember the words of my uncle who said, "This is the day that the Lord has made. Let's try not to screw it up too much." Thank you.
With the Spencer line item, five reported city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With the Spencer line items 7 through 10, first reading Board Bill.
Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance repealing Section 17.62.220 of Section 1 of Ordinance 62047, approved July the 20th, 1990, pertaining to the administration and use of the parking meter fund and enacting in lieu thereof a new section pertaining to the same subject matter. Board Bill 93, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Mohammed, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement making a supplemental appropriation to the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June the 30th, 2018, and amounting to the sum of $390,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Terry Chip Jones Way on Lee Avenue, on East Lee Avenue between North Taylor and Dryden. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 92 and 94, and to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 93. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 9, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and President Reed and ordinance requiring Corrections Commissioner to post a quarterly report on the city's Division of Corrections website regarding administrative segregation of inmates at the city detention centers and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Conne, and ordinance adding language to Ordinance 68536 that gives the Excise Commissioner the discretion in the 25th Ward to begin the administrative process set forth in Ordinance 68536 to fine, suspend, or revoke liquor license held by a business that fails to obey a nuisance issue within 30 days of receiving a nuisance notice, as established in Ordinance 69730. Board Bill 88, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance repealing Ordinance 69864, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 3rd Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 45, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving the petition to establish the City Foundry Community Improvement District, establishing the City Foundry Community Improvement District, reaffirming certain findings of blights and finding a public purpose for the establishment of the City Foundry Community Improvement District. Board Bill 60, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Conway, Oldenburg, Coulter, Alderwoman Murphy, and Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance relating to public safety, imposing under and by the authority of Section 67.547, subject to the approval of voters, a one-half of 1% sales tax on all retail sales made in the city, which are subject to taxation under provisions and solely for the purpose of providing revenue for the operation of the Department of Public Safety, including police and fire divisions in addition to any and all other sales taxes allowed by law. Submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to impose such tax, providing for an election and the manner of voting thereat, providing that if such questions shall receive the votes of a majority of the voters voting thereon, that such tax shall be authorized and in effect as provided in Section 67.547 of the Vice Statute of Missouri and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for sale between the city and MCB Hotel owner prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection with the contract for sale and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for sale between the city and Virtual Realty Advisors LLC, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection with the contract for sale and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance repealing ordinances approving the development plans and redevelopment plans for the Malanphy Urban Development Area, the Montgomery Industrial Commercial Park, industrial and commercial area, and the Madison Acres Plan for the Madison Acres area, respectively, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a severability and emergency clauses. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 40, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and ordinance adding language to the Ordinance 62101 that will prohibit the Parking Violation Bureau from doubling a parking meter and parking, doubling a parking meter and parking violation fine if payment is received within 20 calendar days or less if an appeal of the fine occurs, either through an administrative or state court, where the appellant is found guilty. The fine will not double if the payment is received within 10 or less calendar days. Board Bill 59, Committee Substitute, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Conway, Oldenburg, Coulter, and Alderwoman Murphy, and ordinance relating to the solid waste services fee established under Ordinance 68698, authorizing an increase to said fee of $3 per month per dwelling unit commencing with the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2017, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to condition vacate travel in the southern north-south alley in City Block 483 East bounded by Hickory, Graton Park, and Dolman. Board Bill 73, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance authorizing honorary street name Justine M. Peterson Pathway. Justine M. Peterson Pathway will begin at the intersection of North Grand and Windsor Place and run west on Windsor Place to the intersection of North Spring Avenue and Windsor Place. Board Bill 80, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Oregon and Cherokee by regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Cherokee at Oregon and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 81, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Louisiana and Potomac by regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Potomac at Louisiana and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the eastern strip of Clifton beginning at Columbia and extending southwardly 6152 Columbia, bounded by Columbia, Salford, Magnolia, and Clifton. That's the extent of our second readings.
With the Spencer line item 14, and at the request of Alderwoman from the 1st, we're going to move the following board bills from the regular, from the perfection consent calendar to the regular perfection calendar. On page 9, Board Bill Number 67. You have it, Madam Clerk?
So noted.
Page 10, Board Bill 69 and 70.
So noted.
Page 11, Board Bills 71 and 72.
So noted.
And page 12, Board Bill 39, Committee Substitute as amended. Add those in order, in the same order they were on the consent calendar, at the tail end of the regular perfection calendar. So it should be Board Bill 67, 69, 70, 71, 72, and 39, Committee Substitute as amended in that order on the regular perfection calendar. I'll repeat them one more time. Board Bill 67, Board Bill 69, Board Bill 70, Board Bill 71, Board Bill 72, and Board Bill 39, Committee Substitute as amended. We'll move from the perfection consent calendar to the regular, to the tail end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 21, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4427 Sholto. Board Bill 49, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3904 Folsom. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Cook Avenue and Finney Avenue Scattered Sites Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3118 Watson Road. Board Bill 64, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, and ordinance approving a development plan for 4025 Shreve. Board Bill 18, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing issuance and delivery of not to exceed $19,400,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for the City Foundry St. Louis Tiff and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 38, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance amending Ordinance 661 six one oh seven by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement in the fifteen thirteen through twenty-three South Compton Avenue and thirty-two oh one through twenty-seven St. Vincent Avenue redevelopment area authorized by ordinance six six one oh seven. Board Bill forty-six sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Taylor, Delmar, Page, Kings Highway redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill forty-seven sponsored by Alderman Cotar and ordinance amending ordinance six nine four one six by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for, in the twenty-three twenty-five Anne Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill fifty-four sponsored by Alderman Ballmer and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial development bonds, series two thousand and seventeen in a principal amount not to exceed twenty million seven hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, construction, constructing, equipping, and improving an industrial development project in the city. Board Bill sixty-eight sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Hibernia Dogtown Development Incorporated prescribing the form and details of said agreement authorizing other related actions in, in connection with such agreement and containing a severability clause. Board Bill sixty-two sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the East West Alley and City Block forty-six forty-nine A is bounded by Etmen, Salford, Columbia, and Clifton Park Terrace. Board Bill sixty-five sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the fifty-foot wide north-south alley and City Block twenty-four eighty-five beginning at Carter and extending southwardly to the northern line of the funny, of the twenty-foot wide alley and City Block twenty-four eighty-five bounded by Carter, Grand, Penrose, and Ober. Board Bill fifty-one, sorry. Board Bill fifty-one sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment establishing and authorizing Public Works and Improvement Program, the Lambert, the Airfield Building and Environment Project at St. Louis Lambert International Airport consisting of capital improvement projects, two and four of the terminal complexes, concourses, parking facilities, taxiways, runways, and associated airport structures and facilities and environments, including certain equipment and vehicles and other associated airport improvements entitled the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen Project Equipment List Part Two at a total estimated cost of nine million dollars, authorizing an initial appropriation in a total amount of two million three hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars from the Airport Development Fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one committee substitute as amended sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Conway and ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bonded indebtedness establishing the city's tax rates and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government for the fiscal year beginning July the first two thousand and seventeen and ending June the thirtieth two thousand and eighteen amounting in the aggregate to the sum of one billion fifty-one million three hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars which sum is hereby appropriated from revenue and special funds named for the purposes hereinafter enumerated and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number one committee substitute as amended.
Good morning, Mr. President, Members of the Board. This year, uh, the city's budget including the airport and water.
Would you like to make a motion for the perfection?
I am sorry, I'm trying to go fast. I move for perfection of Board Bill number one committee substitute as amended.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Please proceed, Alderman.
Uh, this year's, the, the overall budget is one billion fifteen million dollars. Of that, five hundred and ten million is general revenue which is the things that our residents see from police, streets, streetlights, potholes, trash pickup refuse. Um, and, and so that's the meat and butter of what our residents, um, uh, come to expect the city to do. Our general revenue expenditure is down about a million dollars this year. Obviously, um, our costs continue to rise within this budget initially. They eliminated fifty-three positions, um, here, um, in the city. Um, we've added back, um, through E and A, uh, about three positions, um, to at least the building division to keep things up, up to par. We also added back some additional funding, um, to Forestry for, uh, springtime, um, grass cutting. And this year, I, I know we didn't have as many complaints as we have in previous years because last year we put the money in so that we could do this spring. And we've added not quite as much money this time but to make sure that we have the crews available to do the springtime cleanup. Um, long story short here, um, our revenues aren't moving as fast as our expenses. Um, it's, it's a continuous problem. If you look at, from a perspective, the only tax that has grown of any significance in this past year is, is the earnings tax. And we need to focus on that going forward for future years. We need to bring more people into the city of St. Louis and expand the tax base. I know that we have to address some additional issues within here. Um, we do not have the type of overtime we need in the refuse department, um, to operate, to operate as poorly as we're operating picking up the trash right now. And, uh, all of our equipment is very old. Um, our constituents are getting their pickups late. They are getting it picked up, but it's not, generally, it's not been on time, and I know that you're getting a lot of complaints. Next week, we will have a, a bill hopefully to address that and to, it's, it's in the works, it's been second read today, also to, um, restock and get more cameras. We have a lot of illegal dumping. That six hundred thousand of projected overtime is not in this budget, so I, we will need that refuse increase, um, going forward. Um, the other thing is we've had some other options. Um, St. Louis County did Proposition P, and I mean, I'm just talking about bigger, bigger picture. Our police officers, um, have always been, um, compensated less than St. Louis County, and that disparity will grow, and you'll have an opportunity to address that again next week. Um, one thing that, that we didn't do at this point in time, but I want to point out on a bigger picture that if we want to continue to maintain the city, provide the level of services and safety that our residents demand, we have to expand that tax base. Many of the other large cities of the United States have come up with pilots on their not-for-profits and where they pay forty to sixty percent of the taxes that they would have paid if they otherwise, uh, would have been an, an operating entity and not a not-for-profit. Um, Boston, and it's been well studied. Um, just to give you, put it in perspective, over time, twenty-three percent of our real estate by value at a minimum is held by not-for-profits and exempt from property taxes. Three billion dollars, which is about eighty-four million dollars in real estate taxes, are not being paid. You know, if we'd got forty percent of that, that would be thirty-two, thirty-two million dollars. Part of the thing is, you know, they rely, their customers, their employees rely on us providing a degree of public safety, providing roads to their businesses, make sure the lights work there, make sure that the, the building, um, you know, has passed inspections and that my fire department, uh, can come and put out a fire or rescue or evacuate, whatever the condition should be. But we have to look as these institutions continue to expand their property, and if we don't expand the property base, you will continue to see an ever-increasing onerous tax rate imposed upon your constituents going forward if you want this level of service. The level of service that, that we're providing and our city employees, I think, are doing a phenomenal job with very little money, but there's only so long we can keep kicking this can down the road, and, um, we have to grow the population in the city, grow the people that, that pay the earnings tax. Generally, that would be attracting more young people into the city of St. Louis. Right now, sixty-five percent of the people that live in the city of St. Louis are on some type of government assistance, whether it's Social Security or government payments. We don't collect earnings tax on Social Security pensions, any of that. If I can bring someone in, young, twenty-four, twenty-five, get thirty years of earnings tax out of them, that will make a difference. When we look at the long-term planning here for the city of St. Louis and the sustainability of the city as we know it, our efforts have to be focused on continuing to bring new people into the city of St. Louis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I rise in opposition of this board bill. I want to start with, uh, what the sponsor said about our efforts having to be focused on bringing new people into the city of St. Louis. I think part of our problem is that we don't show love and appreciation to the people who currently live here in the city of St. Louis, and I hear that all the time. We have put a lot of effort in increasing certain areas of St. Louis at the expense of both North and South St. Louis. Um, yes, you can get new people, but if, if the other people are leaving faster than the new people, you need to change your strategy. We have not changed our strategy. We have, uh, taken a disinterest in certain parts of the city, and it shows. We have people who do not get tax abatement. They pay their taxes, they do what they're supposed to, and the services continue to dis, uh, diminish. While I was off of this Board of Aldermen, I was saddened to see that we started only cleaning the streets once a month. That is ridiculous in an urban area. When people walk, you need trash cans and you need street cleaning. It makes the difference in how people look at your community when they drive through. Alderman from the eighth had a program that he started many years ago about his corners in, in the Eighth Ward, which I used to live in the Eighth Ward, and it was about cleaning up the corners because when you drive down Thirty-Ninth or you drive down certain streets and you look at the corners, that's, you may not drive down that street, but you make a decision based on those corners. That's the same, same thing that happens when you're driving down Kings Highway or Grand or Ki, uh, or Lindo or any of our major streets, uh, Goodfellow, uh, uh, Graboy. That makes a difference when you look to see what the street looks like, if it's clean even, if the grass is cut, if there are vacant buildings. People make a snap judgment about Vander Venter is another one. They make a snap, snap judgment about your neighborhood, and if this is something that they would be interested in either living in and/or maybe putting a business there. And so, uh, when we have just not done those kind of things, we talk about level of service. The level of service in much of North St. Louis is nil to none. I started to, uh, notice last November, December, all of a sudden our trash was not being picked up, piled up to, uh, the top of the trash cans, overrunning. Um, so I called over to try to investigate because it used to be when you went on to the site to look at an address, it would tell you all kinds of things, who your Alderman person is, who your, who your elected representatives, what school district, uh, what schools your children went to, but it also told you when you got your trash picked up. All of a, and it used to tell you two days. All of a sudden, it says, we guarantee that you will get your trash picked up once a week. So I called over and said, well, what's going on over here? You know, I, I had been on streets up until this year. I've been on streets since I've been at the Board of Aldermen, and so I know the people really well. Why is it all of a sudden it's saying, you're guaranteed you're going to pick the trash up once a week? Well, no, 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 we're going to be picking it up, but, uh, we just put that there and, and the person, I don't want to out the person. The person told me, I didn't do that, somebody else did that. And the person's name that keeps coming up, uh, about not getting good services is Todd Walterman, um, that he doesn't know what he's doing. Most certainly, he doesn't understand trash needs to pick up. Um, we have a, a rule about trash, uh, if you don't have rollout carts, you have any place from four to six, uh, housing units that may be using one trash can. When you go from twice a week to once a week, there is an immediate impact on the neighborhood. You got trash everywhere, you got animals going through it, you got, uh, all kinds of things that are happening that are negative in the neighborhood. Now, these are people that they don't look for anything else, they're looking for basic services. They want their streets cleaned, they want their, uh, trash picked up, but you don't have that. We also look at Forestry, and I kind of feel sorry for Forestry. Um, we use their name. Forestry never was created to be cutting all these vacant lots and vacant houses for LRA. So they have this tremendous task that they've, uh, uh, been put on them to try to keep these houses, uh, cut, but they can't do it. We, we don't, we don't say this is something that has to be done, except for it does happen in certain downtown areas. They don't have that going on, but if you come out to the areas where people live, like they will cut lots every four weeks and cut housing every six weeks. Well, if you don't have vacant lots in your place, in your neighborhood, but you got these vacant houses and everybody's cutting grass, trying to cut grass, so I have a lot of my constituents, they actually will try to cut the front yard. Sometimes they can't get in the backyard. They'll just cut the front yard because they're embarrassed to have their neighbors come to their street, and everybody's house is cut except for the city's property. The city is breaking its own law. We have a law about how high grass can be, and we're breaking our own law, um, and we're allowing LRA to do it. Um, so not any kind of services. The board ups not happening the way they're supposed to. The vacant houses being demolished not happening. You're running the people who would be here and stay away because they can't get anything else but these basic services. We're steady talking about, well, we gotta, we gotta improve for the Blues. We got this building over here, and we're going to improve for the Blues, but that's with tax dollars that the people pay that they're not getting the services. We have to do that improvement because they're in our property where they don't pay any rent. The average person doesn't understand that. They don't understand how the Blues don't pay any rent, but they can get things fixed up. When they come downtown, the grass is not up to their knees, but when you come out into the neighborhoods, this is what they're putting up with. And then, uh, Citizen Service Bureau, when they call them, they get the runaround, they will get the, uh, they will get that, oh, this has been, uh, completed. But completed doesn't mean it's been done. Completed might mean I went out there and I couldn't do it, and so we're not investigating it anymore. It makes the citizen very angry. It makes them not understand. Then the other thing the Citizen Service Bureau tells us, tells people, call your Alderman, call your Alderman. The Alderman, we are not in charge of streets, forestry, and all of those things. And so I made up a chart, I didn't make it up, I pulled it from the city's website, and I give it to people, and I make, and I tell them, so when you call me, and I will try to help you, but know this, if I could, I would fire Todd Walterman. I would fire people who are not getting their jobs done. It's not me that's not doing it, they all report to room two hundred, the mayor's office. So, and that's where this budget come from, not this current mayor, because she just got there, and most mayors, they inherit the last mayor's budget. You might change a few things, but you inherit the last one. But the one that's been there for sixteen years, that's the person why we don't get our streets cleaned, um, properly, why, uh, we don't get our, uh, buildings tore down because there, we made a effort to build downtown in the central quarter at the expense of both, not just North St. Louis, but South St. Louis too. Um, um, some of the South St. Louis Aldermen I've been talking to, they're starting to get that now. I went down on South Grand, past Graboy. I lived in South St. Louis for eight years, nine years, and so I am very familiar with that. It was a very different neighborhood. When I hear my community and they come to me and they'll say things like, well, South St. Louis is getting everything and North St. Louis is not, that is not true. South St. Louis is not getting everything, and a lot of what they need is not being, uh, taken care of either. But it's our own fault here at the Board of Aldermen because we've been so busy being split north and south that, that allowed the central quarter and downtown wards to get way more than what they should have in relationship to the amount of land that's there, and there was been way too much attention on, let's get some more people in here. But if you're bringing five people in and a hundred people are leaving, you're not winning the battle. And if you keep doing the same thing over and over and over again, and every year when we get our census data, then it's not a good thing for us. It's showing us that we're not doing the same thing, and when you have wards like the Old Twentieth Ward that was thriving in the middle of every ward that was losing, instead of tearing it up, what you're supposed to do is say, how can we do this and, and do this all over? How do we make this happen all over? Our, our priorities are mixed up in this city. We do not get level of services that we're supposed to for the people who get nothing else. They don't get tax abatement, they don't get tax increment financing. It's very hard to get development to come to North St. Louis. Before, I had it going pretty good. It's a lot harder since I've come back, but we are working on it. But they depend on us to give them basic levels of service, public safety issues, and for those who don't get it, they, after a while, if they can, renters just move someplace else, which is why you have a great shift in South St. Louis. else, which is why you have a great shift in South St. Louis, people moving that rent all those apartments and houses that have become available. And then you have white flight because you have different people who they don't know and they leave the city of St. Louis. So you just create this vicious cycle because you're not doing the things that you should have done in the first place. Stabilizing communities in both the North and South St. Louis is the best thing for the city. Stop depending on getting more new people and start depending on addressing those people who already live here and giving them the basic city services. We got six million dollars that's coming up in a few years from the Convention Center. I know the Convention Center has, I met with her over there, and she really gives some very good reasons of why they need to expand because they want to compete. And I do understand we need a revenue source. We do have to increase our revenue source, but we continue to do it at the expense of the rest of the neighborhoods and communities, and it's showing. And at no point do we say, "This is not working and we need to stop and do something different." And for those reasons and others, I am not going to support the board bill, there's plenty of other things in there. I do believe there are other things that probably could have been cut out of this board bill. And so I don't, on general principles, looking at how the city has gone, I've never seen how our budget has helped my community in the last twenty-something years. I see how it continues to diminish a community that was pretty much about sixty, seventy percent homeowners and very proud. It has not done anything and it continues to diminish. And if we don't watch ourselves, we're going to be a community with a hundred thousand people, down from millions of people. We're just continuing to go down because we're not doing the right thing. And we keep thinking that if we increase taxes, okay, now we're coming back with a tax increase for trash, we're coming back for increase for the police. Why would my community support something? They're not getting the police protection they think they should, they're not getting the trash picked up, they're not getting buildings tore down, they're not getting buildings boarded up. Why would I continue to vote for something that I see in no way is helping my community? We can continue to do this, we can continue to say this is the only way to do it. I'm proud to say that there are more people and more listening to, "This is not working." We have people now who are opposed to all the tax increment financing that we're giving out, all the tax abatement. That hurts our schools. We closed down our schools in many neighborhoods. That hurts our communities. We seem to be hell-bent on destroying this city. And with people who don't know what they're doing, don't make decisions about my community that don't live here, in all the twenty-six years that I've been affiliated with the Board of Aldermen, we've never had a street director or anybody from the streets who lived in North St. Louis. It's always been heavily populated with people who live someplace else, who don't have a clue and don't give a care about what happens there. And they can tell, and you can tell that. And the people are not going to support tax increases, they're not going to support paying for more police when they're not getting the police that they already think they should be. And if, the people who are making these decisions need to take a road tour and listen to somebody except for the people who tell you, "You're doing a great job," when the numbers tell you, "You are not doing a good, great job." And I just want to close in saying, I adamantly oppose our process being to try to get more people in the city while we are bleeding. We have to stop the bleeding, we have to address the good people that live in our city, and I'm so appreciative. I want to thank every citizen who lives in the city of St. Louis, pays their taxes and does not get the services that they deserve.
All right, thank you. Aldermen, Alderman from the Fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Alderwoman from the First Ward, you expressed my sentiments are exactly what I want to express, but because of my condition and my accident in 2014, I'm not as expressive. But the Fourth Ward wants to opt out of this unfair process. How many times have I stood up and talked about this very same issue about this grass cutting is a joke? Martin Luther King is an honorable man, but the street is not honorable. You should see it. The grass growing out of the tree wells are four feet tall, grass growing out of the sidewalk and out of the streets, and please don't make me pick these pictures up. But this is what's going on in the Fourth Ward and we choose to opt out of this unfair process. I know a lot of you don't want to hear it, but because you don't live in Squawlow and live in an area that looks like Syria or Iraq that's been bombed out. So the Fourth Ward, if we could, we would opt out of this process, but you won't give us our tax dollars back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the Twentieth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would the Alderman from the Eighth yield for questions?
Alderman from the Eighth will yield for questions to the Alderman from the Twentieth.
Yes.
Alderman from the Twentieth, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, I have to admit, the budget as presented to us is a fairly complicated set of documents, so I have some questions for you that might be sort of rudimentary. The Building Division, it's my understanding from looking at the budget here that the Building Division is being cut by three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, is that your understanding?
That was the initial budget, and let me put today in perspective. We added back, we added back to the budget two building inspector positions won, okay? So here's what happens, if we don't pass this bill today, the increases, like adding those people back, doesn't happen. See?
Where, can you, Alderman, can you share that document which describes the changes that we made today?
Right, these changes were made when E and A sent it back to us. I've got some of my cryptic notes there. So we also had added the position for the Board of Aldermen and those things. So if we don't pass this budget today, and that means perfect, suspend, and final pass, then we go back to what was sent over originally. So those positions would be missing, the pay raises, I think, for our support staff here would be missing. That's where we're at today. But we did negotiate that the building, the director, Mr. Oswald, made a very good case to add some of those people back.
Okay, and to be fair to the director of the Building Division, I don't think he's aware necessarily of all these changes, nor am I. If you could, can we make a copy of this? Because the changes, I'm not very familiar with, and I'd like an opportunity to review them. The reason why I bring up the Building Division, we inspect annually twenty-five thousand houses. The Building Division, the work they do cannot be understated. Our cities, our municipal government's responsibility is to provide services to our citizens and ensuring that buildings are safe is absolutely one of them. It's my understanding that we cut the demolition fund by half a million dollars, did we put any of that back in? I can't understand your cheat sheet anyway, you can have it back.
And from memory, okay, on the demolition, and I'm just doing this from memory, that we had received the funds from the MSD, we were able to get some additional demolition, but my understanding of the matter, and you've got to understand the component details, the component details, and I'll get back to my phone. My component details are all here in this two-hundred-and-forty-eight-page book, but the members of the Ways and Means Committee did address those issues. They have the same wants and needs and concerns about their constituents as you do. And I will get you a copy of this made.
I would really appreciate that. The Building Division, what I'd like to see, the numbers I see is the request made by the Building Division and the discrepancy in what we're funding. And my frustration is not only does the Building Division serve a very vital role in ensuring the safety of our residents, but they also generate revenue for our city. While we provide them with eight-point-five-million dollars, they return an additional twenty percent on that eight million, they give us back ten to twelve million dollars a year added to our city's budget. And under no circumstance do I think we should be cutting a division that not only provides a level of safety, but also generates revenue for the rest of the operation for the city. They're not a money-loss department, they generate revenue. The same with our, I know this isn't a very sexy topic here, but the towing division, we're cutting their budget by a significant amount, they can't, we're cutting the very materials they use to tow, the tow straps, et cetera. And while they cost a million point eight, they generate two-point-eight-million dollars in revenue for us. And when they have a request for the materials they need to operate, it's really important and vital that we provide these departments the supplies they need to operate at their full capacity when they are a revenue-generating department. And I think one of the things that we fail to do in the budget process is really get into the nitty-gritty with these departments and find out just what they need to fully function and fully generate revenue for our city. So I do appreciate the changes that the board made. I'd like, you know, but I think it's just vital that we are fully funding these, the most important divisions that we have in our city.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the Nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. As a member of the Ways and Means Committee, one of the things that we talked about at length is the discrepancies of what we need, what is vital, most especially the Building Division. The comments that were made, the responses that were given to us by the director, we knew it was important to make sure that he didn't lose all those positions. And so the thought was to cut three, we got two of them back, and we will continue to look at that process later on. I've shared with the members of the committee and I've shared with other people in city government, if we were employed by corporate America, we would have been fired a long time ago. You cannot continue to operate this way. We need to do a performance audit on the entire city operations. We need to determine where we need modern technology, and we know that's everywhere and that it must work every day. We also know that when you are dealing with entities, and entities are parcels of property, anytime anything is done with a parcel of property, it should be in a modern database so that you don't have to call four departments to find out and then you may still not get the answer. So here we are, 2017, 2018 budget, and we're going to have to get serious. We know we got to pass this today, but I tell you, if when we come back in session, we've got to get serious about this. We have got to run a better operation. The time is now. We have more people moving to the city than we ever had before, but I'm also interested in retention. I'm interested in retention for my police department, I'm interested in retention for my residents, I'm interested in retention for the city employees, all city employees. I think it was four years ago that we finally had enough respect for them to give them a decent raise. But even with that, they're still below par. You can't continue to operate the city of St. Louis the same way you did forty years ago. It just doesn't work anymore, and we have to do something different about it. Now, for those who don't believe it, you see what you have coming your way. So now people think they know how to run your airport better than you. People wanted to take over your water division. People want to come in and manage everything because you don't know how to run the city. So at the end of the day, let's do our business here. We can make changes that are required, we can make sure that there's equity across the board, we can make sure that we do things different. First of all, we shouldn't even be in the business of cutting grass. That doesn't even make sense anymore. Why are we doing it? Because there's a better, more efficient way to get it done, and there's also a better efficient way not to have as many lots with grass growing on it. You never looked at that opportunity. So there are just too many things that we can do as a city. When I look at and listen to each one of these departments, I cringe because they're doing the best they can do with what we give them, but we never sit down and use common sense to look at how it's being operated and move into the 21st, we really need to be looking at the 22nd century right now. So one of the things that I'm going to be doing, I'm going to be saying the same thing over and over again, I'm going to be requesting that some things be looked at. We have got to run this city better. I know we can. We just got to take the initiative to do it. You see, in this budget, had we been responsible, we could have probably redirected a minimum of eight to ten million dollars. You need to look at your staffing patterns, you need to look at the way you operate, and at any given moment, there should be somebody who knows everything that is going on, and that's hard to find. So what I want to do is say, "Yeah, we got to pass this budget. I'm not happy with it. I never will be happy until we actually sit down and do what we're supposed to do." And I know that we know how to do. And so you got to let go of all the old stuff that has been going on forever and change your patterns of operation. And I'd be happy to ask some people to come in who are professional to help us get that job done. It must be done. You cannot do this again next year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the Fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm going to echo a lot of the comments from the Alderwoman in the Nineteenth, as well as the Alderman in the Fourth and the Alderwoman in the First. When we have a budget that is presented to us, it's really, budgets are about priorities. And I think what we are showing in this budget, and the reason I'm in opposition to it, and it's the same reason I was in opposition to it last year, is that we have some very messed-up priorities in this city. We are in the proposed budget right now, which has to be passed today. We spend point-three percent of our budget on health and human services, and we spend fifty-four percent of our budget on public safety. We continue to have high crime rates, yet we're not investing in the things that could actually prevent crimes from happening. We have a heroin epidemic that is ravaging the city, we have the highest STD rates in the country, we have one of the highest infant mortality rates in the country, we have one of the highest rates of women dying during childbirth in the country, yet we continue to not put resources into those things that impact people on their day-to-day life. We had a report come out from the Comptroller's Office just a couple of days ago about the fact that our police department spent five million dollars over budget on overtime last year with no oversight and no accountability, that the audit revealed that we had officers who supposedly worked three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, ten hours every single day, under the overtime that was calculated. We have folks that are making seventy-one thousand dollars a year just in overtime with no oversight and no accountability. And if we know that is happening just in one department, I think we have to think about where this is happening across city government. Our budget shows a lack of imagination. If we had imagination, we would be putting forth plans to close the workhouse, which was not supposed to continue to operate after the Justice Center was built. Costs us sixteen million dollars to invest in an arrest, an incarceration model every year that just continues to put people in prison, deny them opportunity to employment, and never addresses the drug addiction, the mental illness, or the homelessness that puts most people in the workhouse to begin with. What we also see in this budget is an increase in the staff for the mayor's office. When we're at a budget place...
Please maintain some order and keep it down while the Alderwoman continues. Please continue, Alderman.
When we are in a budget year where we are making cuts across the board to every single city department but increasing the staff in the mayor's office, we have a problem. When we can't, at the Board of Aldermen, even hire a financial analyst to help us determine how much things actually cost that we're passing here. But a lot of this is out of our control, as the Alderman from the Eighth was saying. It's a moot point because if we don't pass this budget today, what the mayor's office initially brought forth to us is what will automatically go into effect tomorrow. And I think that that points to a bigger issue. It wasn't always this way. The Board of Aldermen used to have more control over the budgeting process. It was actually because of my predecessor, one of my predecessors, Geraldine Osborne, that the charter was changed to take authority away from the Board of Aldermen in their ability to add things to the budget because Mayor Shamel at the time was so fed up with her continuing to fight for health and human services... her continuing to fight for health and human services to receive more funding in the budget. That was over twenty years ago. I think it's time that we need to revisit that change to the charter so that we can better advocate for our constituents and the things that they want to see in this budget. So, in closing, I just want to say that I hope that we can spend this next year really diving into our needs of the city and what our priorities are and redefining what public safety means, redefining what our priorities are as a city, understanding that we can't impact crime rates if we don't fund things like health and human services and basic functions for people to have a good quality of life. So, I'm looking forward to working with counterparts over the next year so that when we come back here next year, we are fully funding things like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we are fully funding programs that will decrease STD rates, that will keep people out of jail, that will allow people to, in the city who live here, who have made the choice to invest in our community to have a good quality of life. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighteenth?
Yes, Mr. President, I would just point out that much of the problem, I believe, is not just in the dollar amount, but the whole process that the Board of Aldermen presently has in relationship to the budget, meaning the board doesn't get the thing until May and then has to have this decision done by the end of June. It really does not give the Alderman an opportunity to really strategically and deliberately look through all the information. Once being the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, it's like you're running a marathon. The minute you get it, you have to schedule all of these hearings and try to get all the folks in that you possibly can before you have to get this thing finally passed. And so, then that is a major part of it, I believe, also the timing and the present structure of it, how the board has to address it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to add, the Alderwoman from the nineteenth talked about we gotta change this. I totally agree. What we really need to change is, back many years ago in the eighties, the former mayor, Vincent Shamel, had the charter changed. It took a lot of power from the Board of Aldermen. We need, he convinced the citizens that we needed this, so it puts this pressure on us to do it as the mayor says, or then we just have to let it go through. If we vote it down, they can just let it die, and then they get what they want to. We need to put the oversight of the Board of Aldermen back into the mix so that we are a powerful board. We need to get out there, propose reversing the charter change. In fact, I think I will sponsor it next week because I know, I actually had that letter from former Mayor Shamel when he sent it out bragging about that he had gotten it changed because he couldn't beat Geraldine Osborne, Alderwoman from the fifteenth. She knew her stuff back and forth, but it stripped such power from the Board of Aldermen. And all these years, every year that I've been here, I hear the next year, we're gonna do better with the budget next year, but there's no real reason for a mayor to do better with the budget because they can just propose their budget, and at the end of the day, what are we gonna do about it, okay? And even having E and A change things sometimes and not send it back to the board, that's also not legal. So, I hear you. I'm not looking to kill the budget. I personally am voting no because I know it in no ways reflects what my community wants, but the real way we get our power back is to change the charter back to the way it was. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighth, you recognize the close?
I knew Geraldine Osborne. Everything, I've known her since I was about ten or eleven. I had to fight her on the streets where the fifteenth ward and the eighth ward overlapped, and one time she'd support my dad for state rep, next time she'd be against it. She was one hard-working lady, but she did teach me a lot about the budget because she was the chairman when I came down here. Now, there was a couple of technical issues, and I love Jerry to death still to this day, but the technical issue was she had a little bit of a beef with Mayor Shamel, which I had a little beef with him too. But the bottom line is, our fiscal year starts July first, so that starts tomorrow. And they were getting into a process, and I think that's where Shamel took advantage of it, that the budget wasn't approved in November, but they've been through five months of the year spending money. And so, that was the issue. Some of it is the Board of Aldermen, we don't come back to about April, it's usually always April fifteenth. For some reason, I would remember that date. And it is a little bit of a marathon, but it actually starts in January when Paul Payne asked all of the departments to submit the budget based on the projections. Again, this is the culmination of a lot of effort by the members of the Ways and Means Committee. These changes that we made were important to both this board, to the services that our constituents need. If I had more money, this would be a better job. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, that we perfect Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended. I think there was a request for roll call. Was there, there was a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
President Reed? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Twenty-three, aye votes, three no votes, one abstain.
By a vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the eighth and perfected Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended.
Board Bill Sixty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an honor is designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the sixty-three-hundred Clayton Avenue Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving...
Some more order. Please proceed.
Adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a redevelopment project with respect thereto, adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment area, establishing the sixty-three-hundred Clayton Avenue Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by the city officials and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number Sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we perfect Board Bill Sixty-seven.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, and seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. Please proceed on.
This bill authorizes tax increment financing for a development at sixty-three-hundred Clayton Avenue in the Dogtown neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, I have made the decision not to vote for TIFs anymore since we're going to do this great changing of the TIFs. I'm looking forward to us doing that. I did talk to the Alderman, and actually, I let sixty-eight get by me, but I'm just going to vote present on it. I think that if we actually are gonna have a plan, and I'll start with actually the person who says we're gonna have a plan, but most certainly, we need to put some kind of moratorium on TIFs until we get a plan that's fair, okay? The Alderman from the twenty-fourth in no way abuses the process, so I, but I'm just not voting for TIFs, so I'm gonna be voting present. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize the close?
I renew my motion, and we'll take a roll call of the request of Alderman from the first.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first, that we perfect Board Bill Number Sixty-seven, been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz? Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
President Reed? Alderman Moore? Alderman Honowitz? Twenty-three, aye votes, two present.
By a vote, sustain the motion. Alderman from the twenty-fourth and perfected Board Bill Number Sixty-seven.
Board Bill Number Sixty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an honor is recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed three million eight hundred thousand dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for sixty-three-hundred Clayton Avenue redevelopment project, prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number Sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we perfect Board Bill Sixty-nine.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, please, please proceed.
I renew my motion and request previous roll.
Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Board Bill Number Sixty-nine has been perfected.
Board Bill Number Seventy, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an honor is designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Municipal Courts Building Hotel Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan, adopting and approving a redevelopment project for the portion of the redevelopment area known as RPA One, adopting tax increment financing within RPA One, making findings with respect thereto, establishing the Municipal Courts Building Hotel RPA One Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number Seventy.
I move for perfection of Board Bill Number Seventy.
Moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion?
Request previous roll.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by, there was an objection to previous roll. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar? Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg? Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
I didn't hear you. Did he say? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
I need your vote. Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Mohammed? Nineteen, aye votes, three no votes, three abstain.
By a vote, sustain the motion. Alderman from the eighth and perfected Board Bill Number Seventy.
Board Bill Number Seventy-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an honor is authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and MCB Hotel Owner LLC, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, authorizing other related actions in connection with such agreement and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number Seventy-one.
I move for perfection of Board Bill Number Seventy-one.
Moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
I, I'm finished.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's been a request for previous roll. Alderwoman from the first?
Are we in the discussion phase still?
We're...
I know, it went so fast, I'm giving you a minute to catch up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, okay. I rise to oppose Board Bill Seventy-one. This is, now, this is an abuse. This is a place that TIFs are abused, downtown. Downtown is one of the places we should not be doing any more TIFs. We should really look at holding up on tax abatement. These are all the things that affect our school. I realize we have some young people that don't understand why I'm voting no. Tax increment financing is something that affects the public schools, which I am very much a supporter of, and we need to, if we're doing this thing, we need to limit downtown to probably, they can only get maybe five percent of the TIFs in the whole city. They don't need anymore, neither does the twenty-eighth ward, most of the twenty-eighth ward. We need to draw a red line around places, and we can easily start out with saying, let's look at how many TIFs and tax abavements they had, and let's look at them in proportion to the rest of the city, and it will not be a good report, and we need to limit and stop this. So, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, I don't really have a problem. I don't think he abuses it all, but downtown abuses tax increment financing, and I will not be supporting any TIFs for downtown or tax abatement until we get this much-promised new policy about these TIFs.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth.
Previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll. There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Abstain.
Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderman Martin, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Twenty, I vote three, no votes, two abstain.
By your vote, stay in motion, Alderman from the eighth, and perfected Board Bill number seventy-one.
Board Bill seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and honors recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of tax increment revenue notes for Municipal Courts Building Hotel Redevelopment Project of the City of St. Louis, Missouri in the principal amount of not to exceed nine million eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus issuance cost, prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill seventy-two.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill number seventy-two and request previous roll.
It's been, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, and it's seconded by Alderman from the tenth and the twenty-sixth. There's been a request for previous roll, any discussion? Here are no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and honors recommended by the Parking Commission, making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving the Parking Division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall Parking Facilities, Information Technologies Office, Argyle Parking Facility, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking Facility, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facility, Couples Parking Facility, and Justice Parking Facility for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, amounting in aggregate to the sum of fifteen million five hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, I entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is the operating budget for the Parking Commission, which has been enumerated and appropriated by the Parking Commission. Ask for your favorable consideration.
Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President of the board and members of the board. I rise in opposition until we make an amendment to this bill that Terrence is passing out, an amendment right now, as well as a couple of legal documents for everyone to look at. There was a change that was made in committee, section twelve, which is on page four. Section twelve says, "All line item budget modifications in travel shall be pre-approved by the Parking Commission. Any payments required by the appropriations herein shall be made in accordance with the policy and procedures imposed by the Comptroller." After legal examination by, by both an independent attorney from the, that the Treasurer's Office retained, and also after review by the City Councilor's Office, both were in agreement that section twelve is in violation of the city charter and also in violation of state law. The, basically what it is in violation of is that the Board of Aldermen may not legislate through the budgeting process. And Aldermen has proposed section, or the issue is whether an amendment may be offered during budgeting and appropriations process in violation of section, let's see, section four thirteen of the city charter. It is not allowed for the no bill except a general appropriations bill, which shall only embrace matters on account of which money are appropriated, shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title. The full legal analysis is on everybody's desk, along with the email that I received back from the City Councilor's Office affirming that they believed that they were in agreement with the analysis of the attorney that the Treasurer's Office used. So, in order to make sure that this bill is in violation with ours, or is in accordance with our city charter, I would like to bring forth amendment number one to Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
All right, I need to get a copy of that amendment.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to introduce amendment number one to Board Bill number thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended. Terrence is going as fast as he can here. We'll pause for a second.
Is there anything else you would like to talk to related to the bill while the staff gets the amendment on everyone's desk?
I think it's a, you know, it's a general appropriations bill. It's the same bill that's basically approved every single year, just this one section was added. And in adding this section, it posed violations of both the city charter and state law. And so if we're passing something at the Board of Aldermen, we need to make sure that we are doing it in a legally sound way, in accordance with the city charter, in accordance with state law. And so that is the reason for the amendment, and it will put the bill in line with the, the way that the bill has been passed, you know, for the last, you know, umpteen million years. We've never had this section put into an appropriations bill for the Treasurer's Office before.
All right. Is the, does everyone have a copy of the amendment? Does everyone have a copy of the amendment? I'll take that as a yes, if I have... Does every... If you do not have a copy of the amendment, please raise your hand so that we could decide. Could someone help the staff get that out? And they need one up here also. All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, I would renew my motion.
No, would you like to make the motion first on the amendment?
Oh, I thought we made it and it was seconded.
No, you did not, you did not, it wasn't on everyone's desk.
I would like to make an, a motion to bring amendment one forward to Board Bill number thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the fifteenth, seconded by Alderman from the first. Any discussion on amendment number one to Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended? Alderman from the first.
I rise in support of the amendment, specifically as the Alderman from the fifteenth said, it's because it needs to make this board bill legal. I will say to the Alderman from the twenty-second, who is the Chair of Streets, there are ways that you do yours, what you're trying to do, but you need to just do it legally. This Board of Aldermen is often taken for granted, and so people just pass by us as though we're not the executive branch, we are. But the committee substitute that he brought forth is not legal, and I think also part of what you will have on your desk should be part of a legal opinion, speaking to what the City Councilor agrees with the analysis of a part of it. So, what I would like to see done is that we need to get this budget done. It's not, obviously not gonna get done by the thirtieth if we make this amendment, but this amendment needs to be done, otherwise we're gonna spend a lot of time in court for the courts to tell us pretty much what is in this amendment. And for that reason, I am, I'm rising in support of the amendment, but I would say to the Alderman from the twenty-second, if you want to do this, do it the correctly the way.
Any further discussion, Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, would the, Alderman from the fifteenth yield to questions?
Alderman from the fifteenth will yield to questions to Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Alderman, do you, what's the name of the City Councilor?
I can't hear you. So it was Julian, Julian Bush, who was the one who reviewed it and told Nolan, our City Councilor, that's the email that's on your desk, that they agreed with the, the first part of the legal analysis.
Okay, so in the email that I am looking at, it's titled, "Neat Legal Opinion Review", from Nolan Sharkey to you, it says the City Councilor agrees, however, there's no City Councilor opinion, there's no official opinion.
The City Councilor did not have time to write up an official opinion, and so they asked that I share the email in saying that, yes, they do agree with it, they just didn't have time to type up an actual opinion.
Well, certainly Nolan probably agrees with this since it came from him. I would like to have an actual legal opinion from the City Councilor. I think that would probably be appropriate. But it, it kind of puzzles me that, I mean, so what's the problem with the section? Does it reference this in violation, so talk about that. How's it in violation of our city charter?
Because we, we are not allowed to legislate through the budgeting process. So you could do this legally, you just can't do it as part of the budgeting process. That's the problem, it can't be in a budget bill.
So tell me, what can not be in a budget bill?
All of section twelve, that is, that is changing, because section twelve changed, basically took away the authority of the Treasurer's Office over the travel budget. If you want to do a separate board bill that does that, you know, you can do that. You just can't do that in a budget bill.
It takes away the authority of the travel, is that all it does?
That is, it gives it to the Parking Commission, yes.
Okay, so the rest of it, you're okay with?
I'm saying that all of section twelve is considered legislating through the budget process. You could do a separate bill that just handles the content that is in section twelve, and you would be okay to do that legally, but you would not be okay to do that through the budgeting process.
Let me ask you this, so who's the authority, the governing body of the Parking Division?
I'm not sure.
The Parking Commission. All right, it's the Parking Commission, so...
I thought you said commission, sorry.
I'm sorry, so the Parking Commission, so the Parking Commission decides on how the budget is appropriated. Would you agree?
I agree with that.
Okay, and the Parking Commission would decide on approval of travel in the budget, would you agree?
I would agree that this is, that the, that they do approve the budget, but by changing this within the budget bill, changing that authority that has not been granted to them previously within the budget bill, is legislating within a budget.
So what you're saying to me is that the legislative branch has no authority to modify appropriation bills because it didn't look like the previous years?
No, what I'm saying is that you have the authority to do this, just not within a budget bill. You would have to do a separate board bill that would accomplish the same goal.
Why can't we do it in this budget bill?
Because it is in violation of the city charter, and that's, that's where, if you look at the legal analysis, the language from the city charter is there. Page, top of page two, that says that no bill except a general appropriations bill which shall only embrace matters on account of which monies are appropriated, shall contain more than one subject, which will clearly be expressed in the title. It is in violation of the charter, that is...
Okay, tell me what the separate subjects are.
The separate subjects are that this is a budget bill, and you're also changing the authority, where the authority currently lies. So you can do that, you just can't do it within a budgeting bill.
And in what way is it changing the authority in the bill?
It is taking away a currently held authority of the Treasurer and giving it to the Parking Commission that they have not currently had.
Okay, I'm gonna have Terrence pass out some information that I want to enlighten the body with, so you can clearly understand that I feel that it's appropriate, and I would hope that you guys feel it's appropriate as well, because I will back it up with Board Bill number one. So here's what happens in the Parking Division, because you guys have, are making this about the Treasurer, and it's not about the Treasurer, it's about the Parking Commission. It's about how the Parking Commission does its business and how the legislative branch does its business. So, I'm gonna show you, speaking of analysis, which you can appreciate, I did an analysis of what was budgeted last year, and I balanced it against the Comptroller's accounting system. And I want you to notice, we'll just start with line number one. What was budgeted in salaries was three million nine hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. But what went to the Comptroller's Office for appropriations to be appropriated was three million one hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, inconsistent. And, and I don't want to read all of these, but let's go to... We'll take education and training. Thirty-nine thousand three hundred is appropriated, but only thirty-one thousand eight hundred went to the Comptroller for consideration. You look at banking fees, three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty was appropriated. This is the legislative act, and this was, was approved by the Parking Commission. But what went over, communicated to the Comptroller's Office, is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. By the way, it was overspent by one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, unbeknownst to the Parking Commission. The Parking Commission had no idea that all these transfers were occurring right under their nose. Man, talk about transparency. So, you have that going on, and that's within the Parking Commission's purview. Every month, the Parking Commission should be getting a financial sheet and looking at it, making sure everything is according with appropriations. And then you have, for years, speaking of travel, which seems to be an issue, and if, and if I was in that position, I would never bring up travel. So, you got four years of travel where the Parking Supervisor, the Treasurer acting in the capacity, has been to Palm Springs, Las Vegas, New York, Miami, San Francisco, Boston, Denver, many more places, including Paris and China. Now, you guys have probably heard about that on, on the news. So I'm not gonna belabor fifty-three or fifty-six, almost sixty pages of travel vouchers that were paid for the trips of, out of the Parking Commission fund. However, what I will share with you is about, give me a second here, Man, I have so many papers, please bear with me. Okay, so, for example, travel, unbeknownst to the Parking Commission, because they don't have privy to this information, because it seems that the Treasurer can just do whatever the Treasurer can do because the Treasurer's the Parking Supervisor, however... However, the parking supervisor reports to the parking commission, in which there are five members of. So let's talk about just this year of, of some travel. Atlanta, Georgia, April the 9th to the 2017 Hope Global Forum and Annual Meeting, have no idea what that has to do with parking. Montgomery, Alabama, Harvard's Con Public Service Fellows reunion, have no idea what that has to do with parking. Dallas, Texas, in June, just this month, June 10th, or 9th and 10th, Latino Center for Leadership Development, I have no idea what that has to do with parking.
In order, is there a question that you're asking?
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is justify why that piece of the appropriation bill is important and how it does fit within the purview of the, so we're not changing policy.
So two things. Can, can you tell me how much the parking commission already cut the travel budget for this year?
Uh, maybe about $7,000, I'm not sure. Well, no, the parking commission cut it by 75%.
By 75%?
Right.
So a lot of the issues that you are bringing here have already been handled by the parking commission, number one.
Okay.
Number two, this wonderful spreadsheet that you gave us here actually shows that the treasurer's office saved $2.9 million, that they came $2.9 million under budget. Wouldn't we love it if all of our city departments came in $2.9 million under budget?
Yeah, we would love it if they give us more of that money, too. That's what we really love. However, that doesn't speak, wait a minute, Alderman from the 15th Ward, that doesn't speak to the irresponsibility of illegally appropriating funds without authority, does it? Oh, let me give you a big one, this is a bonus, you'll appreciate this one. So remember the MetroLink study, and the $2 million that went to the MetroLink study? Okay, so it was approved by the, and the poor parking division had no idea that they have all this power, they've just been yielding to the parking supervisor. So what happened on July the 12th was that this resolution was ran around to all the parking commissions, they signed off saying, hey, let's give MetroLink study $2 million because we should be in this, which I can appreciate and I would support. However, there was no meeting. They just ran around getting people to sign off on a resolution, then enter it into the minutes next month, because they don't have regular meetings. They had like four, two years ago, and five last year, which is absurd, because there's a lot of business that goes on in that department. But here's the kicker, I cannot find an appropriations bill for that $2 million, that was already spent. So there seems to be no transparency, there seems to be dereliction of duty, and this amendment that's only requiring that the parking commission does its job is germane to appropriations. So I just don't get how it's a two single issue.
Do you have a legal opinion that does indeed show that this is legal under the city charter and state law?
No, but you don't have one either.
I, I do, I have two.
We don't have it before us.
It has been handed out by...
No, what you handed out was an email that said the city council agrees with you, but...
Along with an attached legal opinion.
Well, I'm not considering any legal opinions that doesn't come from the city of St. Louis, but I respect the legal opinion, but I disagree with it. I respectfully disagree with it.
Are you an attorney?
No, but I don't have to be, I play one, I win more cases than I lose.
Okay, okay. I'm not an attorney either. I renew my motion.
You can't renew your motion, you're on the floor.
Any further...
Or is he still...
She's standing.
Yeah, any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th.
And members of the board, this is fun. Would the Alderman from the 15th yield for questions?
Alderman from the 15th will yield, Alderman from the 7th, please proceed.
I'll be brief, I promise. So Alderwoman, it's your opinion, I guess, in the opinion of the opinion of the treasurer's office, that this is an illegal legislation through, legislation in the appropriation process, is that right?
Correct.
Now, moments ago, we voted on board bill number one, did we not?
We did.
Did you happen to take a look at Section 12 of board bill number one, which we just voted on? Here, I'll read it to you, I've got it open here. "Section 12, as of July 1, 2017, expenditures for discretionary travel by any elected official and employees in excess of three trips annually, which includes travel for training, seminars, conferences, professional association meetings, and similar functions, must be approved by the Board of Estim and Apportionment." That appears to also, I guess, under your analysis, be legislating through the appropriation process, but yet I heard no objection to that Section 12.
I was actually unaware that that Section 12 existed in that bill.
Yeah, well, I would encourage, if we're going to make, you know, pontificate and make legal arguments from the floor, let's be consistent and do them in all of our bills. I rise in opposition to this amendment and encourage my colleagues to vote against it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
President, members of the board, how many years have I heard this argument? Take out the other treasurer, put in the new treasurer, it doesn't make any difference. This used to be the Alderman from the 13th, Fred Wessels, and the treasurer, Larry Williams, this is the same argument. In fact, we had it, I guess, was it last year or the year before, and when we were talking about it, it came back to this difference in accounting. And I want to remind you and the comptroller, you all were supposed to be putting money in our budget so we could get the treasurer on the same accounting principle as I, as we have, so that this would go away. I want to just remind you that, okay? So part of this is different accounting procedures. The Alderman from the 22nd is not wrong to want to see good government and for people not to take trips that they should or should not, they should not take. And so what he's wrong in is that he cannot surpass and go around the city charter. The city charter is very specific in that, how you can do this. So nobody is saying, he's, oh, we just, we want to take the treasurer's side, you can't do it this way. If I think I want to come to your house and paint your walls yellow, and I think your walls are yellow and should be yellow, if I legally don't have the right to do it, me thinking it all, I want to, does not make it so. So if we can push this through, if you want to go ahead and vote for this, then they're going to take it to the courts, we're going to lose, and then she still won't have a budget, and how does that help anybody? We just pushed through a budget where everybody said, we have to get that done because we need a budget. The treasurer's office needs a budget, too. If he really does not believe that the city councilor said this, a really easy way he could do is put it on their formal calendar, because I did, I will tell you, I told the people they should get a formal opinion, but the formal opinion is going to say just what it says in this email, that he cannot do it the way he's doing it. There's a different way to do it. And so I stand in, in support of this amendment, because it is the correct legal way to do things, and I would encourage everybody else to vote for it. And if he is the sponsor, if he does not agree with it, he can put it on their formal and wait for the city council's opinion. But to push it through and then make it be a lawsuit is a waste of money, and it makes no sense.
All right, Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I rise in opposition of this amendment. I am sitting here scratching my head with all the problems that we have in the city. To be sitting there and hiring legal opinions over something like this is just kind of, I don't know, just kind of like a trip to Twilight Zone. I, I would think that we should go ahead and pass this today, and if the city treasurer, who I think all of us know, stood up in front of a public audience and said the comptroller approved her budget, her travel budget, and then immediately thereafter, the comptroller said she did not, wants to go ahead and take the city of St. Louis to court over us trying to take a look at her travel budget, bring it on. I can't wait to see the headlines. Now, we can go ahead and do this, let them play, let that game play out, and if there's a right way to do this, I would encourage the Alderman from the 22nd to introduce the proper board bill, and please sign me on as a post sponsor, and we'll do it the right way, but in the interim, we have to do something to rein in a department and city government that is clearly out of control. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the Alderman behind me here. I think we got a lot of issues. Spent half of my night out on college with people who are trying not to get shot, invest, and a whole lot of other stuff, man. We are complaining or arguing about things for an extended period of time, where we should spend a lot more time on things that actually can make an effect after we leave out this room. As far as the bill itself, I've talked to Sharkey Nolan, which is, of course, you know he is. From my understanding, this amendment addresses two separate items, which makes it illegal, meaning that the two separate items it addresses is the budget itself and it addresses policy. Now, if we cannot address policy and budget in the same board bill, that would be illegal and it would pose a problem in itself. What I would like to see in particular is, I'm hearing that this is in state statute that we cannot address them both. If this is that big of an issue, it should be, and we got enough resources in the room where we could look up state statute and be able to figure this out, if this is illegal or not. I don't understand why we're taking so much time to discuss something that is supposed to already be law, when we are sitting around with cell phones and computers that can just look it up and say yay or nay. We got lawyers in the room, we all are Aldermen, we all instruct policy, we make policy, we write laws, we all, you know, you all been doing this for an extremely long time. This is an issue that should be worked out, you know, with simply just looking things up on the computer and finding out whether it is an issue or not. If we do need to introduce this as a separate bill, then that's the day where we should be spending 45 minutes on discussion and how everybody feels about it. If this is not the right time, can we get somebody to look this up so we can move forward and do whatever, you know, which is next? Like this is, we got a lot of issues in this city, a whole, whole, whole lot of issues in this city. And I got people right now that are trying to figure out how to feed their families tomorrow. We talking about a billion dollar budget, you know, so my thing is, we need to figure out how to get some more resources into our communities and not figure out, you know, things that we can literally look up in state statute and spend a lot of time on. It's, right now, I'm not in support or not in support of this bill at the current time. I would like to see some policy on it, I would like to see the statute that states where this is illegal, because once again, we got everybody standing up talking about it, all we need to do is just look it up. We've done it a billion times, can we just look, there it is, look it up. Somebody read this. All right, Section 13, let's make it simple. "No bill except the general appropriations bill which shall only embrace matters on account which monies are appropriated shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title." City Councilor Ops. 834-8034-9498, 9733-9838. I can keep going with the bills, let's see cases, "The title to an amematory act that indicates the subject matter of the act amended and the nature of purposes of the amendments is insufficient." St. Louis versus United RYS Co. of St. Louis. So if you want to look this bill up, it's in Section 13. The bills contain a single subject exception. So, I mean, it says it right there, if, if this is...
Yeah, that's, that's part, that's part of our charter, and it's a general, it's general appropriations bills, and this is a appropriations bill.
Understood, so it sounds like what we're talking about has, you know, is kind of clarified if everybody just pull out their phones and look it up. If we need to introduce this as another board bill, let's do that. But, you know, once again, man, let's, let's kind of, kind of move this forward, people, we got people that's dying out here. We all got issues in our ward, everybody's trying to save somebody. Let's do that.
All right. Alderman from the 16th.
Eleven.
Oh, you're talking, I thought, I thought, I thought...
Eleven, not sixteen.
Oh, yeah. I'm thinking about the Alderman from the, Alderman from the 11th, sorry about that.
Thank you. I just want to say that I, I'm supporting this amendment, not because I don't agree with what Section 12 is trying to do, but I do think there's a gray area, and we have heard from the city councilor about this, and I want to stand with the city councillor's opinion on this. We're also not being honest with ourselves if we don't acknowledge that politics is being played, I think, on both sides of this issue. We're coming fresh off a mayor's race, and I don't think we're acknowledging the emotions behind all of this. Let's go back and let's do another bill to address this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th.
I'm over, I'm over here this time. Would the Alderman from the 22nd yield?
Alderman from the 22nd will yield for questions to the Alderman from the 18th.
Yes. Okay. The authority of the parking commission in relationship to the treasurer's budget, they approve the treasurer's budget each year.
That's correct.
And if there are changes to that budget, does that come back to them for their approval? The parking commission?
It, it should come back for the review, because they are the governing body.
Okay. And so then if this amendment passes today, then that in effect does not allow for your bill to be passed before the end of this month, which means in the budget that the treasurer put forward becomes the budget?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman from the 18th, are you...
May I continue?
Yes, you can continue.
Alderwoman, would you yield for questions?
Alderman from the 15th will yield for questions, and Alderman from the 18th. Alderman 18th, please proceed.
So you are aware of that, that, through the passage of, if this amendment passes, then the budget that the treasurer puts forward becomes the budget, and not any changes that the parking commission has recommended? You are aware of that?
Correct, I am aware of that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman, Alderman from the 22nd?
Mr. President, it's my understanding also in the charter in Section 13, it talks about the purpose of the section is to provide for an honest title and prevent deception. 508 Chestnut Incorporated versus the city of St. Louis, 389 Southwest, anyway, 1965, suggests that it's, that as long as there's no deception, then it's okay. So there was no intent to deceive. Also, the city's, city code says that after the parking commission brings the board bill further, that it shall pass with any amendments. That is what the city code says, which would therefore give the street committee an opportunity to amend the bill and send it to the floor. But again, this bill is not taking powers away from anybody. It's basically saying, do it in accordance with best practices, in layman's terms, that's all it's saying.
And it's a, and it is the appropriations bill, it's the general appropriations bill for parking.
Excuse me?
It is the general appropriations bill for the, for parking.
Right. And, and if you look, and the Alderman from the 7th, you know, talked about Section 12 of board bill number one, talks about travel for all city elected officials, that includes the treasurer even acting in the capacity of the parking supervisor. So if this is not going to be in effect, then board bill one is not going to be in effect. So if we're not going to pass this, then we should not pass board bill number one.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderman from the 22nd yield?
Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 18th, please proceed.
Thank you. Was the attorney that has been serving the board at your meeting when this was passed? When this language was there?
I believe so. We've been moving so fast down here lately. I don't want to misrepresent, but I think he was.
Okay, all right. But no mention was made in the meeting about this being...
I'm sorry, say again?
No mention was made in the meeting, if he was present, about this being...
Yes, and it was presented in committee, and the treasurer was there. And the only issue that the treasurer really had was the piece that had to do with the directors of the comptroller. So I'm just not sure how we got to this place.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? They raised their hand back there, but it goes, Alderman from the 15th, recognize to close on the amendment.
Yes, so from what my understanding of is the, of the streets committee meeting, and you can go back and look it online, that there was no discussion of the amendment when it was brought forth and added in. It also was done orally, which is allowed under our rules, but didn't give committee members the ability to look at it in writing and really ask questions about it. But I would like to renew my motion unless Sharon is...
Yeah, I'll, yeah. All right, it's been...
I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 15th, seconded by Alderman, Alderman from the 1st, that we adopt amendment number one to board bill number 39, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy... Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, was that a no? Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, President Reed...
No.
Nine, I vote, sixteen, no votes.
By your vote, you fail to sustain the motion. Alderman from the fifteenth, amendment number one fails. So what's, we're back to the original board bill number thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended. Alderman from the twenty-second.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by the, um, Alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect board bill number thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, I didn't hear you, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy...
Present.
Present? Did he, he said present? Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, President Reed...
All right.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Cone, someone wanted to change? Yours changing?
Yeah.
Sixteen, I vote, nine, no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the twenty-second and perfected board bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Mr., uh, Chairman, my President of the Board members, I would like to suspend the rules to bring board bill number one, committee substitute as amended, and committee thirty-nine, substitute as amended for third reading, final passage.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion?
What was that, what was that, what was the two votes?
Uh, thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended, and board bill number one, committee substitute.
One?
Uh, one and thirty-nine, both of the budget bills. Would, uh, so, so, what, you want to, you want to suspend the rules on them separately? Uh, it's been requested that we suspend the rules on these separately, thirty-nine and, um, one, committee substitute as amended. Alderman.
Because I would want to take a minute to ask some advice because they both can affect each other, and if we don't pass board bill one out today, or we try to change it, all the grass cutting goes away, the adding the inspectors goes away. There's extreme importance, and, and from what I was listening to before, there seems to be some things in one that also pertain to thirty-nine. So, um, I, I would say I would like to do them together, but I'd also like a minute to get some advice from our legal counsel.
This, um, uh, this wouldn't amount to a division of the, of the, of the question. This is, I, would be a division of just two separate motions. But, uh, I, if you would still like to move forward with your current motion, you have the opportunity to move forward with your current motion. You know, I, I, if you want to, if you'd like to talk to, uh, the attorney...
Yeah, I would, I would like to, and I would also like to talk to the Alderman of the twenty-second ward to see, because I had talked to him previously and said that I was going to do these together.
I know, but, uh, please, have a conversation with the attorney real, real quick. Alderman from the first.
Members of the board, pursuant to our rules, any member can do a division of the, of any motion, and as such, I want a division. I have a right to vote on each and every one of them. It is not debatable, um, separately.
I, I understand.
All right. I can't hear him at all.
Uh, I will change it. So, uh, if the Alderman the tenth wants to take his second away, I, I will, uh, change my motion to move board bill one, committee substitute as amended.
All right, it's been moved. Alderman from the tenth, you withdraw your second. All right. He withdrew his second. And then Alderman from the twenty-third, you withdraw your, uh, your, uh...
My, I withdrew that, and so now I would make...
Make the first one.
A new motion to, uh, to bring board bill one, committee substitute as amended to the third reading, final passage calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. We suspend our rules for the purposes of moving board bill number...
Number one is...
Number one, committee substitute to third reading, uh, calendar.
And final passage.
Third reading, final passage calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone. Twenty-three, I vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the twenty-third and move the board bill one, committee substitute to third reading calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
On, uh, on board bill one or...
Thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
So, yes, I would like to make a motion that we move, uh, board bill...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend, to suspend the rules to bring board bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended to the third reading, final passage calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. If, if, you all have to be more timely, you, you, please, please, please proceed. Alderman, please, please proceed. Please proceed on, please proceed on, please proceed.
I rise to oppose suspension of the rules for board bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended. Um, I think that, um, that we, we will wait, we should wait and put this on the informal calendar and wait for a formal legal opinion. Um, the com, I'm, I'm sorry, not the com, the treasurer already knew that had we done the, um, amendment, that it was not going to get passed anyway, the bill. And so if we do it this way and we go ahead and get it passed and then we go to a lawsuit, it, it hurts nothing, um, and there's no rush for it. And so, um, I would ask everybody to vote no on suspending the rule and bringing it down and let it sit there and wait until, uh, we get a legal opinion, which we can have by next week. And then, uh, it'll be a, a legal opinion from the city councils, and that makes a difference to me.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further, Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, again, this bill needs to be passed today, June thirtieth. It's the last day. Putting it on the formal calendar is, is, I would advocate against that. Again, the language that's in question is no different than some of the same language that's in board bill number one. If we don't have a problem with third reading finally passing board bill number one, then we should not have a problem doing it with, uh, board bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended. It's the same standard. So I would ask that you vote the third read finally passed board bill thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first?
Again, um, the treasurer is the person that's elected to be the treasurer, um, and she knows and has been made aware that it could be, it could wait. Um, actually, the Alderman said something, I have a problem with, with one as amended and passed and go, and am going to vote no. But I particularly have a problem with this one since, um, we have had some correspondence from the city council's office, um, and, and, and if we get back later and next week and we say, oh, this can't be done, it'll be too late. So it makes sense to wait. What's the rush? If the treasurer understands that her budget might be a week later, I'm not saying hold it for ten weeks. I'm saying, do not suspend the rules, let it come back to the third, uh, for next week. If there, if, if the, uh, city councillor says, oh, yeah, you can do that, fine. If the city councillor actually has a legal opinion that says you can't do that, then maybe we need to reconsider and do something that's a more, um, fair way to do it. It's a, a, a more, um, equitable way to do it, and it also saves money for us not having to go to court and fight for something, and then we lose and have to start all over again. We've been, I've been down here when we had to redo gambling and everything else. So it hurts nothing at all to wait and have the budget, uh, uh, wait for one more term to see what the city councillor has to say.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I certainly appreciate, uh, the thoughtfulness of the Alderman from the first ward. I highly doubt that we would go to court if we need to meet and fix something. I mean, we shouldn't have to fight each other. If we have to meet and fix it, I'm amenable to fixing it. But right now, the budget needs to pass June thirtieth.
Alderman from the first?
If you're amenable, then if the treasurer is, is okay with us holding it and waiting, then the easiest way, if you're amenable, is to just, you don't even have to put it on, um, the formal. You could just let it ride and go through its natural process to go to the third reading. It does not have to pass. Um, they will last if we don't get the budget passed. It's not like our big city budget. So if you're amenable and you want to work together, you cannot speak to, because if I'm the treasurer, and this is illegal, I'm going to immediately, immediately go over to court where I have, uh, the power to have lawyers, and I'm going to start a lawsuit. Um, and I do, um, Mr. President, members of the board, if I could inquire of the Alderman from the twenty-second ward...
Alderman from the twenty-second, will you yield for question to the Alderman from the first? Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Um, Alderman, is there a, uh, emergency clause in this bill?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions. Um, so, again, um, it makes no sense. If you're open and amenable, you will wait one more week. It's not going to put the treasurer out of, of office, but it can make a big difference if we get it back later and we go, oops, then we got egg on our face. If we wait one more, uh, week and the, uh, city councillor says you can't do this, or you can do this. If you can do it, hip, hooray for you. We've changed twenty-six years of a conversation that I've been listening to, but if you cannot do it, then that will cause the, uh, action of a lawsuit, and it doesn't need to happen.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm in agreement with the Alderman in the first ward. I think, you know, it's not a real big rush. I know we do need to pass out the budget, but it wouldn't hurt to take time out so we can get, you know, legal opinion on both sides. It could be the city council or the state legislator, so we'll do the right thing to prevent any lawsuits. So wouldn't hurt to wait, and that's what I agree with the, uh, Alderman in the first ward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second?
Mr. President, our city code, chapter seventeen, says that we shall pass the bill by June thirtieth, which mirrors the, uh, city charter. So we do have an obligation to pass a bill by June thirtieth.
All right. Any further, Alderman from the twenty-third?
Am I recognized to close?
Um, yes, you're recognized, close.
Okay. So I would, I would ask for, that we would pass this, by not passing this, I agree with the Alderman from the twenty-second, that we have to pass these today by our own charter or they go into effect the way they were presented. This will put back all the travel expense that was taken out. I strongly, I would ask and encourage everyone to vote to suspend so that we can get this third read and final passed. So I would just renew my motion.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Suspend the rules for the purposes of moving board and bill number thirty-nine, committee substitute as amended to the third reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Ingracia, no, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg... Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Twenty, aye votes, one no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-third, and move Board Bill Number Thirty-nine Committee Substitute as amended to the Third Reading Calendar.
That's extended Board Bill for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill Three and Forty-four.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you're recognized on motion for the Third Reading Consent Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Third Reading Consent Calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt our Third Reading Consent Calendar, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Did he say pass?
Yes.
Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Spencer. Twenty-three, aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and Third Read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third Reading Report of Engrossments.
Board Bill Fifty, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration the sum of one dollar to quick claim to McGrath and Amp Associates Incorporated, certain city-owned property located at nineteen-twenty South Kings Highway Boulevard.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on Third Read and Final Passes your Board Bill Number Fifty.
I would ask that we Third Read and Final Pass Board Bill Number Fifty.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the tenth, Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed.
I'm just going to renew my motion.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, that we Third Read and pa- finally pass Board Bill Number Fifty, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman, Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-four, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-third, and Third Read and finally pass Board Bill. Please proceed.
Board Bill Number Fifty-five, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section ninety-four point six-six-zero of revised statute of Missouri, adopted and approved by the voters on August the second, nineteen-ninety-four pursuant to ordinance six-three-one-six-eight, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales taxing to the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One, appropriating eleven million five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on Third Read and Final Passage your Board Bill Number Fifty-five.
I would ask that we Third Read and Final Pass Board Bill Fifty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, entertain the second on that, second by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Alderwoman from the first, you're recognized.
Some members of the board, I, I, I promised the, uh, the, the, the person, the sponsor of the board bills, I was not going to grill him, so I'm not going to ask questions, I still just want to bring up over and over and over again, that we are now funding, uh, Bi-State or, uh, Metro as you call it, um, and that I'm looking forward to this north-south distributor, I want it sooner than later. Um, we got, uh, we used to have, uh, twelve wards in North St. Louis, we got ten wards, kinda, in North St. Louis, and fourteen or so in South St. Louis, and both sections of town are without a north-south distributor, this is something we ought to lock hands on. So, I'm hoping as we pass these bills, which I am going to vote present, that we keep ever mindful, that we've already waited twenty-some-odd years, and it didn't happen, and let's not keep pushing, um, funding for something that doesn't happen for the majority of the, uh, city of St. Louis. So, for that reason, forty, uh, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven, which I would have voted no on, I will be voting present.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized, close on Board Bill Number Fifty-five.
I would like to first thank the alderwoman of the first ward for not picking on me. And, and I understand and support what she, I also appreciate that she's far passing this, and I understand her reasons, so I would just renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the tenth, that we Third Read and Final Pass Board Bill Number Fifty-five, Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Thank you, Joe.
Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Cone. Twenty-three, aye votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-third, and Third Read and finally pass Board Bill Fifty-five.
Board Bill Fifty-six, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section ninety-four point six-six-zero of revised statute of Missouri, adopted and approved by the voters on November the fourth, nineteen-ninety-seven, pursuant to ordinance six-four-one-one-one, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the city to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales taxing to the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trun- Trust Fund Account Two, appropriating eleven million five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on Third Read and Final Passage your Board Bill Number Fifty-six.
I would ask that we Third Read and Final, Final Pass Board Bill Fifty-six.
It's moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion?
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
Can, can we do previous roll? Yeah, previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll, here are no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill Fifty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-one million eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, as described and defined in Section ninety-four point six-hundred through ninety-four point six-five-five of revised statute of Missouri, two thousand, as amended for the period herein stated, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes and further providing-
Just a minute.
-that appropriation is conditional upon the Bi-State Development Agency supplying the board of estimate and apportionment an annual evaluation report, further providing that in no event shall the comptroller draw warrants on the treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds deposited in the Transportation Trust Fund and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on the Third Read and Final Passage your Board Bill Number Fifty-seven.
I would ask that, uh, we board, we pass Board Bill Fifty-seven out.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, that we Third Read and Final Pass Board Bill Number Fifty-seven, been seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion?
I renew my motion and ask for previous roll.
It's been, it's been a request for previous roll, here are no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Conway and ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest expenses and principal of the city's burden indebtedness established-
Just one.
-establishing the city tax rates and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government for fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of one billion fifty-one million three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, which sum is hereby appropriated from the revenue and special funds named for the purposes herein after enumerated and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on Third Read and Final Passage your Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended.
I would ask that we pass out Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, uh, any discussion? There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alder, Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alder, Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Howard. I can't hear you. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Cone. Twenty-three, aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the third, twenty-third, and Third Read and finally pass Board Bill Number One, Committee Substitute as amended.
Board, Board Bill Thirty-nine, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission, making appropriation for a payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving the parking division assets, and debt service expenses of the parking division of the treasurer's office, Keel and City Hall Parking Facilities, Information Technologies Office, Argout Parking Facility, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking Facility, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facility, Couples Parking Facility, and Justice Parking Facility, for fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and seventeen, and, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of fifteen million five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized on the Third Read and Final Passage your Board Bill Number Thirty-nine, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to Third Read, finally pass Board Bill Thirty-nine, Committee Substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any discussion, any discussion? Then, um, it's been a request for roll call, Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Ald, Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. She in here? Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Spencer, your vote is? Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cohn. Eighteen, I-votes, five, no votes.
By your vote, sustain the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Thirty-Nine, Committee Substitute As Amended.
That's the extent of third reading.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills Three, Forty-four, Fifty, Fifty-five, Fifty-six, Fifty-seven. One Committee Substitute As Amended. Thirty-nine Committee Substitute As Amended.
All other business being suspended, President shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Thank you. Thank you.
First reading resolutions.
Resolution Seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Williamson pursuant to ordinance six-seven-four-seven-seven. The Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendation of the Director for the appropriation of neighborhood parks' capital improvement accounts funds for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
Alderman from twenty-six, you recognize on first read of Resolution Seventy-eight.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have that resolution moved to the Parks.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from thirteenth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Seventy-eight to Parks.
So noted. Resolution Seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Williamson. Pursuant to ordinance six-nine-three-seven-two, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for appropriation of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Funds for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
Alderman from twenty-six, you recognize on the first read of Resolution Number Seventy-nine.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd also like to have Resolution Seventy-nine moved to Parks Environmental Committee.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-sixth, second about Alderman from first, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Seventy-nine to Parks.
So noted. Resolution Eighty, sponsored by Alderman Williamson pursuant to ordinance six-nine, six-four-nine-nine-four. The Parks and Environmental Matters Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Accounts Fund for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
Alderman from twenty-sixth, you recognize on the first read of Resolution Number Eighty.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd also like to have Resolution Number Eighty moved to Parks Environmental.
Moved by Alderman, Alderman from twenty-sixth, second about Alderman from twenty-third and the first.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Number Eighty to Parks.
So noted. Resolution Eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. The Board of Aldermen directs the Legislation Committee to convene hearings under its authority for the purpose of hearing the complaints and concerns of members of the Poet Laureate, Laureate Task Force.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the fir- first read of Resolution Eighty-two.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that Resolution Eighty-two be assigned to the Legislation Committee.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the thirteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Eighty-two to the Legislation.
So noted. Resolution Eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. The Board of Aldermen recognized the events and issues that caused the East St. Louis Race Riot and by adoption of this resolution, join in the hundredth commemorative activities. Congratulate those who have kept the history alive.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the first read of Resolution Number Eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've asked for unanimous consent.
Here are no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number Eighty.
One.
One.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second. Wow, same by Alderman from the twenty-first and the third. Alderman from the eighteenth, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Res- this resolution, um, puts onto record that the Board of Aldermen, uh, both congratulates those that have kept the history alive, but also joined into the commemorative activities that are taking place. In nineteen seventeen, a major race riot broke out in East St. Louis when white residents, particularly the, uh, aluminum ore workers felt that black workers were going to take their jobs. This happened July first, second and third of nineteen seventeen. July second was considered to be one of the worst days. Uh, of many of the accounts, the lowest amount that I've seen so far, they're saying three hundred and fifty African-Americans were killed in that rioting. Over seven thousand families were displaced. The entire black section of East St. Louis was burnt to the ground. East, Eads Bridge was used as one of the escape routes by many of the residents trying to get away. Uh, they made their way to St. Louis and here, St. Louis opened up what they had then, opened the doors to African-Americans, which was really their first time. Uh, what they called the St. Louis Municipal Lodging House, which was located directly across from City Hall at one-ten through one-twelve Tucker Street. The mayor of that day, uh, took out of the mayor's contingency fund a hundred dollars. Now, we know in nineteen seventeen, a hundred dollars is like fifteen thousand or more today to feed the refugees from, uh, East St. Louis. Uh, many residents also from St. Louis went to East St. Louis to try to help out, to bring people back over. Also, um, later in July, the NAACP sent W.E.B. Du Bois and Ida B. Wells to St. Louis and they looked over and interviewed people and wrote a major article in the Crisis Magazine. Marcus Garvey made a public statement condemning the actions that happened in East St. Louis during July first, second and third of nine, of nineteen seventeen. Uh, when Du Bois was here, he met with a number of African-American businesspeople and urged them to open up the Urban League. And so, the Urban League in St. Louis was formed to give relief to the survivors of the East St. Louis Race Riot. They in turn did fundraising. The, uh, Urban League, the NAACP and several other charitable organizations did fundraising to help African-Americans to reestablish themselves, some back in East St. Louis, some in St. Louis. But a large majority, they bought land for them out in what was then the area of Kenlock and grew that area of Kenlock into what we know today was the City of Kenlock. And so, this riot that happened at East St. Louis and those elders called it the East St. Louis Race War had a major impact to this entire region and is considered one of the worst, uh, racial conflicts in the United States, uh, since that day. This marks the one-hundredth, uh, anniversary of the, uh, East St. Louis Race Riot. There are a number of activities that are being held throughout the region, uh, both in St. Louis as well as in East St. Louis and some in the county. Uh, its significance to America is that it raised this issue about race, conflict, poverty, disenfranchisement and the need for America to take a very hard look at it. Uh, in two thousand and fourteen, the City of East St. Louis created a commission called the Centennial Nineteen Seventeen, um, Commission and Cultural Initiative. And they took as their theme, remember, commemorate and rebuild. That rebuilding is more than just talking about East St. Louis, but the relations that are necessary between people to keep that kind of conflict from happening again. The Kennedys and Horns were in East St. Louis at the time and so my father was seven years old when this happened. Uh, a mob gathered in front of the, in the family's home there and a white mob and shot into the front of the house and set the back of the home on fire, causing my grandmother to take her seven children out a side door and lay for hours in tall grass and then later go down to the river because that same mob was blocking off Eads Bridge and to build a raft and to float herself and her seven children to St. Louis. If that had not happened, I would not be.
Wow.
That same Samuel Kennedy that some of us knew that sat in that same desk I sit here today was one of the survivors of the East St. Louis Race Riot. And there are many other families in St. Louis who are descendants of that racial conflict in East St. Louis. It is something that we cannot just and should not sweep up under the table, but to look at very coldly and to make sure that we address those issues that caused it so that we will never do this again. History gives us at least two things, information and inspiration. Information is, is data, who, what, when, where, why and how. And based upon that data, we can make changes and project ourselves into the future, but it also can inspire us either to do better, hire work or to make sure that stuff like that doesn't happen again. And so this resolution puts this Board of Aldermen on record, one, that it salutes those who have kept the history alive. Secondly, joining in the commemorative activities that are taking place. And then, thirdly, pointing out the city's contribution to the survivors of the East St. Louis Race Riot. The resolution itself talks about the municipal, um, Housing League and the other organizations that pitched in. There will be an event on Eads Bridge on July second, which is the, which was considered the worst days of the rioting because Eads Bridge is the connector between the two and how many use that as a way to get to St. Louis. And then many in St. Louis use it as a way to go and help out. That will be this Sunday, uh, at seven P.M. on the bridge. And there are a number of activities. There'll be a, a press release that is put in all the Aldermen's, all the people's mailbox with details on the various activities. But this resolution puts this board on record as recognizing this history and commemorating the individuals who both survived and those who helped out. Uh, we will have at the event, the NAACP and representation from the Urban League as well as, um, descendants of the survivors. And there are far more than you think in this city and in this region who are here and have tried to keep this story alive as a way to ensure that tho- this type of thing does not happen again. And with that, Mr. President, I would renew my motion.
All right, thank you. And thank you. That was a, a beautiful, um, account of, uh, history. Let's give the Alderman from the eighteenth a round. And understand, we're thankful she built that raft too. Otherwise she wouldn't be here. It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth. Uh, uh, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Mr. President, I move that we have this resolution embanked.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, second about Alderman from the twenty-second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Resolution Number Eighty-one embanked.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
It's like to say, I always enjoy history lessons from Professor Alderman Terry Kennedy from the eighteenth board.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was gonna ask to move it embanked, so thank you, Alderman from the twenty-first board.
All right, thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number Eighty-one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Following resolution was reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Resolution Fifty-three, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. The Board of Aldermen directs the Public Safety Committee to hold public hearings at least every other month with the necessary city officials to review and get updates on the implementation of the PIR Plan.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution Number Fifty-three.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Resolution Fifty-three.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, entertain a second about Alderman from twenty-first and fourteenth. Alderman, Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The PIR Plan, uh, the acronym stands for Plan to Reduce Crime Through Prevention, Intervention, Enforcement and Reentry Strategies. Uh, the PIR Plan tackles fifteen high-crime neighborhoods across the whole city of St. Louis and its purposes to add additional resources to those communities with a lot of departments like the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, St. Louis Police Department, uh, Circuit Attorney's Office and just a collaboration of offices that can make an impact in those communities as a resource. And there are benchmarks and goals and objectives and timetables that have been placed in the plan. So this gives us an opportunity every other month or so to interact with the individual responsible for the PIR Plan. I believe Carl Filler is the, is the, uh, contact person on the mayor's office so that we'll know if it's working or not and what we need to do to tweak it. And hopefully there has been monies placed in the budget strategically to really effectuate the PIR Plan because one of the things I hate to see us do is come up with a plan and it really doesn't benefit the community. We just say, we came up this plan, it's really nice, it sounds good, but then it's really not working. So, um, with that, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Rest, the following resolution was reported out of the Rules Committee. Resolution Sixty-eight, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Mohammed Kennedy Flowers, Bosley Moore, Hubbard Davis, Jeffrey Boyd, Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, Williamson, Alderwoman Pam Boyd and Green. The Board of Aldermen support the passage of H.R. Forty by Congress relating to the creation of a national commission to study and examine the inhumane institution of slavery and its negative im- effects upon American life and culture.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on this second read in Resolution Number Sixty-eight.
Mr. President, I move for the final passage of Resolution Number Sixty-eight.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from the sixth, Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution directly supports House Resolution Number Forty, sponsored by U.S. Congressman John Conyers out of Michigan. It is only symbolic. All it does is officially recognizes and acknowledges the institutional effects of slavery and racist Jim Crow that has had on black people and black communities. When you look at all of the issues and concerns that our communities go through, especially communities in North City of St. Louis, lack of quality education, uh, lack of accredit, uh, uh, lack of housing, poverty and no economic development. All these things can be directly related and corresponded to slavery and the unjust oppression of black people in America, including the City of St. Louis. Uh, what this resolution does is simply start dialogue and start the conversation. In order for our communities to progress and move forward, we have to recognize the effects of slavery and a, and a role it has played on everyday society in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent, uh, in passage of Resolution Number Sixty-eight. Uh, this is a very important issue and the African-American Aldermen in caucus is in full support. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the eighteenth.
Yes, Mr. President. The, um, House Resolution Forty, uh, gives it a time period from sixteen nineteen to eighteen sixty-five. Eighteen sixty-five being, uh, the ending of slavery. In sixteen nineteen, a Dutch frigate, a warship, pulled up on the shores of Jamestown and took off twenty African-Americans. Now, it was a Dutch ship, but everybody, every black person that came off of that ship had a Spanish name. The historians are saying that this Dutch frigate attacked and pirated a Spanish, uh, slave ship and then brought them here to the shores of the United States to sell them for money. They came off with names like Isabella and Pedro and the rest of that. Uh, they were taken, had been taken directly from West Africa. That is, that time period is credited as a time as the beginning date of slavery in the English colonies in the United States. Uh, and then the study would be until eighteen. And then the study would be until eighteen, until eighteen-sixty-five, the ending of the, of the Civil War. We have to keep in mind that this is not a long time ago. All of our, some of us, like my grandparents, were the first generation born free from slavery, means all my great-grandparents had been in slavery. The notion is, is that the institution requires examination as to its impact upon American life and culture today. Believe it was Frederick Douglass that said that anytime a person puts a chain on another person, the other part of that chain is connected to them, that they too are engaged in that type of thinking and restrictive actions, and that it does not stay just to the person they've chained, it begins to spill over into other parts of their life. And we could see that as it came to infringement upon women's rights and infringement upon other people's rights. It is a way of thinking that causes this type of mentality that would allow one person to think that they can own another. Now, in the United States, the, it had an evolution. It was customary in Europe to have indentured servants, that's when a person could enter into a contract with another person and work for a period of time and receive some benefit from that, some goods and services, but they were not paid a wage, they just had an agreed amount that they would get after fifteen years or twenty years. That process continued in America. Around eight, around sixteen fifty-nine, fifty-eight, a woman here in America from England was beaten by the man who had her contract. Since she was white, she was able to sue in English court and won that he did not have the right to do that. It is at that point that they began to focus the institution of slavery and indenture ship like that on African Americans alone. Three companies were involved in directly beginning this. One was the Royal Dutch Shell Company, Trading Company, later being known as Shell Oil Company. They who were involved in that trading began to focus specifically on Africans, and then various states or colonies began to enact laws in the, in the sixteen hundreds, also putting it on African Americans. And so, this resolution would study all of that and then make any recommendations as to what to do. The resolution itself does not endorse reparations, but it does endorse the study, and we must understand that history. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, just real quickly, I would just like to point out that my father is eighty-three years old and was a member of this board for a long time, and he knows what it feels like to be legally discriminated against, and that is a direct, I'd say, issue that, that came down from slavery, and I can speak to him directly at any given time and ask him about things that went on forty years ago when he had to advocate just to eat at a Steak 'n Shake. So, you know, with that being said, on the flip side of that, there are plenty of people who are his age also that are, you know, that could have very easily been the people who are being discriminatory, so being a young man at this point in time, walking around in St. Louis, knowing that this is one of the most racist places in the United States and experiencing racism, period, we know the adverse effects of slavery still exist right now today, seeing as we still have people who exist who understand what it feels like and actually feels like to legally be discriminated against, so just like as the Alderman said, Alderman Kennedy said, we are still affected by this right now, today, and most of the people, especially young men, don't really understand where the effects come from. Most people don't understand why you don't have generational wealth, and that all comes down from where you have came from. Most of us don't have parents or grandparents who had anything at all seventy years ago other than, you know, a chain around their neck and a master, so releasing us into this country, not giving us adequate resources to be able to survive as a culture, you know, not as Americans, but as a culture, we were released and not given what we needed to do to become proper members of the society in this country the way that it was built while we were slaves. We were not included in the, the, how would I say, the, the, I'm sorry, the, the, the policies, we weren't included in government, you know, period. So, when it comes down to looking at the adverse effects right now, we still feel inadequate when it comes down to having proper representation, whether that be in the Board of Alderman, whether that be in the courts, whether that be with the police, which is why there's a really big disconnect between white, black, north and south, we have big issues in the city, and the way to correct those, we have to go back to the, the, the place where it all began, where it all started, so we can look at what has happened versus where we are right now and where we need to be in between, how can we meet in the middle and how can we move forward? We always talking about crime, ninety percent of the people who doing crime in the city are black, period. That's not, that's not a black and white issue, that's just a fact. So, we want to get down to solving most of the issues that are creating issues in our community, are creating a problem, opposing problems for our community, then it comes down to, once again, and we have to look at what has started the detriment of our society, what have started the detriment of our culture and why we continue to perpetuate it amongst each other. So, I appreciate this bill, I appreciate everybody working hard on it, we appreciate it, you know, once again, it's not about getting reparations, you know, we're just studying the effects of it, and as a young black man in the city of St. Louis, I can say I'm affected every day, no matter where I go, being Alderman or not. I take myself to Chesterfield at six o'clock in the morning or five o'clock, I can't walk a dog, I can't be in Chesterfield, I can't be in St. Peters. Now, that is not St. Louis city, but that's the St. Louis region, and that all has something to do with me as a young black man coming down to my city, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, Alderman from the sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would just like to ask that my name be added to this resolution.
The sponsor?
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Okay. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize the close.
Yes, sir, before I close, I'd like to thank the distinguished statesmen from the eighteenth ward for leading this effort. Mr. President, I request unanimous consent of resolution number sixty-eight.
All right, it's been moved, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first and seconded by Alderman from the sixth and Alderman from the third, that we adopt resolution number sixty-eight, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lawrence, unfinished business?
We have none.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to take us into closed session. It's, it's, it's.
Oh, isn't it?
Yeah, right at the top of the announcement.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the full board meeting go into closed session under the provisions of section, was it six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one of Missouri revised statute in order permit the members to discuss personnel matters.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alder, Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Cone. Twenty-three, I, oh, I'm sorry, twenty-four, I vote.
I vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, the board will now go into closed session, I'll ask city TV to suspend with the recordings, everyone that's not a member of this board or staff, please exit the chambers, any members of media, lobbyists and the like, and if the marshals will clear the gallery and have someone standing up next to the gallery so no one enters the gallery, and then we need a marshal here at this door to watch that door also. So, let's give city TV ten and everything a minute to shut down.